Alright, everybody, welcome to the October 13th, 2016 meeting of Penfield Planning Board. Now, someone please call and roll.
Sure. Hetzke?
Here.
Bastian?
Here.
Knauer?
Here.
Tidings?
Here.
Burton?
Here.
Nursing her?
Here.
Valentine?
Here.
Sangster?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Weiser?
Here.
Okay, we got minutes from the last work session, but not from the public hearing yet, right?
That is correct. Draft minutes from the September 22nd work session are out there for the board. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Bastian and, uh...
Hetzke?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Knauer?
Hi. And we will have those minutes from the 8th...
Tidings?
Oh, sorry, Terry. I was just ready to go, man. Yeah, we'll have the minutes ready from the meeting on September 8th, ready for your next meeting.
Okay.
That being said, table applications. First application, baby landing, Bob, no updates. In a holding pattern until we hear more from the applicant.
Alright. I'll present a motion to continue table.
Thank you.
Tidings.
Hetzke?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Knauer?
Hi.
Tidings?
Hi.
Got it, that's fine.
Alright. Next, I don't know...
Alright, table application number two, Oak and Apple. Before we get into some of the updates that the applicants provided for this meeting, staff has prepared what we're calling a planning board review checklist. I think this would be a helpful item to have, a document that has a checklist. Could you open that, Doug, from the main folder? Of the active projects folder? Doug's in full up on the screen, and we've handed out a copy to each board member. This list is basically a summary of many of the standards that the board reviews during applications that require a higher level of review, or they're contentious applications. Given the history that we've had so far with this application, we felt it was appropriate to introduce it now and use this as, again, a checklist to make sure that we're giving it the hard look it needs.
Well, we typically go through these anyway.
Exactly.
It's a very nice thing to have, all in one document.
This is something that came from Jim...
Thanks, Jim.
...a couple of years ago. Our apologies, it's taken us this long, but, you know, it's something he proposed, just to kinda, you know, go through and itemize, especially when those, getting those applications that span multiple meetings. And I know we got into that at the end of Baytown, and we got to the end of the application in the morning, obviously been reviewing it for years, and had settled some issues in September, and then the next issues were October, and had kinda put some of those to bed, and then we had some residents even come in the last meeting and say, hey, all we talked about was an access easement.
Right.
While the board had documented and completed its review of items along the way, and had kinda settled those. Documenting the dates, one, people can go back, you know, obviously it'll be part of the file, so it's a fileable instrument, they can go back and then reference the October 13th meeting that these items were talked about, and if they wanna, you know, watch the videotape, they can. So, just kinda help to document one, the timeline, in case some things happen. We may use this on all new applications, see what you like. We can flex it, adjust it, customize it per project. But, again, staff and the board kinda typically go through the same process every time, it just formalizes and puts it on paper, and so it documents that a little bit more, so...
I think it's a great idea.
Didn't know the initial word thoughts on it. You can't take credit for it, it was something Jim had kinda proposed a while ago, it's taken us a while to put it together. You know, but some of the bigger ones, as we've gotten into the projects, that could be helpful, just to kinda keep ourselves in, check where do we end off, where do we pick up? You know, as we kinda go through the process, and just to document that process, so. If the board's comfortable, we were, you know, looking to possibly, you know, roll it on this application, obviously, you know, it's customizable.
Is there something you wanna vote for, or we just started doing it unofficially?
I don't think you need to vote on it, it's just kind of a...
It's a reference.
It's an added tool.
It's another tool.
Additive to these...
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. So, if you have questions, or you see something on there you wanna discuss, feel free to bring it up as we go along.
Mr. Burton, thanks for putting it together.
Yes, pleasure. Teamwork.
Appreciate it.
So, jumping into what the applicants provided for this meeting, we have response letter, we have revised site plans. I'll highlight some of the changes on the site plans. The... could you also pull up the farmstead? Thank you, perfect. We have the farmstead area plan showing on the screen. Two things to point out here, and I can point them out again on the site plan. The... yeah, hey, you look at that laser pointer.
Did you have one in common?
That's not yet. First off, previously the applicant had the water service line going over just slightly to the north through what is the steep slope EPod area. That's been relocated to be completely outside the steep slope area. Thus eliminating the need for really too much review in that, or any disturbance in the EPod area. We also have... The land bank parking has been removed from the outside of the drive aisle around the premises. The result is just the 13 proposed parking spots that were originally there.
So, at one point, there was some employee parking by the barn. So, if this project were to advance, I wouldn't want anybody to misconstrue this as to thinking that they couldn't park employee vehicles by the barn, so you might want to touch base with the applicant's engineer and let them know that that was something that we had previously discussed and that we were okay with.
Okay. We'll do that. So, those two things have been adjusted on the plan. We also see that a dumpster enclosure with concrete pad has been added to the plan, per the board's request after the last work session meeting, along with a temporary storage area for the spills of the apple products when they press for the cider. So, they've identified those two locations on the plans. Also, in their response letter, it was acknowledged that dark sky compliant lighting was shown for the building mounted and pole fixtures on the site. Some uplighting has been proposed along the trees, along the streetscape. Could you pull up the lighting plan, Doug? Thank you. So, we have some pole fixtures as we come up the entrance drive. However, there are, I believe, these small triangles as shown by the trees are the decorative uplighting that would shine against the trees along the entranceway as well. Yep, and we did, we received some lighting cut sheets for that as well within the project files that were made available for the board, too.
Any thoughts of the board on that? I know there was public concern about, you know, dark sky and everything else, which they're showing on the building, which they're showing for the parking lot. Obviously, a wash light is not a glare. AJ, correct me when I get off topic.
I will.
You know, so it's not glare inducing, but obviously, an uplight or a wash light on a tree is technically dark sky compliant, so just wanted to highlight that and what the board's thoughts, concerns, if any, were on...
Well, my thing is, the major concern is, somebody's sitting in their house and they're getting offensive glare, seeing a bright light source that's distracting. And the uplights on the trees, to me, are an elegant touch. You know, I think they'll look nice, decorative.
I mean, dark sky compliant is not a town regulation, it's kind of an industry standard, so it's not a violation of our code or a requirement we have, but just as we're listing it out, just wanna be very clear to the board and to the public that, you know, these different elements in there, that the whole site may not be dark sky compliant if this is part of a... And I'm gonna know that, so...
So, we...
Would the pole lights be considered dark sky compliant, though?
Yeah.
The building mounted, the pole lights, the parking lot lights.
We actually brought that topic up because of language and easement, and that's something in the town code. So, I agree with you. They're not gonna be high wattage lights, and that light's gonna tend to get lost at a short distance above the top of the outline of the tree.
Right.
So, and like you pointed out, the owner is likely to have some kind of a dimmable or a controllable system on the premises, so they can ramp that down, they can ramp it down with different bulbs, too.
Board, wanna see any sort of timers on that, or will that be self-governing by them, or is there something you would wanna see? Obviously, we'd always wanna see some sort of security lighting and not to have no lighting at all, ever. I mean, obviously, you'd want security lighting for all businesses, but...
I think if the project progresses, they're entitled to provide some security lighting for their employees and for emergency responders to go there in the middle of the night or what have you, so I don't think that's something we really wanna regulate.
AJ, I think you did bring up, you want kinda dimmable...
I don't know, I think you made that comment. Plus, I would imagine that they're not gonna have the lights along the drive all the way up lit after operating hours.
Right.
So, and the operating hours are seven o'clock on Thursdays and eight o'clock on Fridays and Saturdays, I think, if I recall. So, there may be something wrong with the lighting.
If these are line voltage fixtures, there's a lot of voltage drop from there to the house, so giving a dimmer for that kind of distance is not something that's off the shelf. So, what we talked about the other day was just making this subject to the review of our landscape consultant and review of the board after we get their cut sheets.
Well, cut sheets were provided, they are in the project materials.
From a control system standpoint...
Oh, if you wanna see that.
I think the single biggest factor is controlling the glare offsite. And, uh, having the dark sky compliant fixtures is to be accounted for.
Right.
Okay.
And there's some...
Okay.
They are somewhere, I just forgot where.
I think they're just in the applicant's middle, as far as just the cut sheet.
I believe it is in the applicant's correspondence folder.
Yeah. So, it's not on the sheet?
Uh, no, active projects. Uh, while Doug looks that up, speaking of the landscape consultant, we did receive a memo to the board from the landscape consultant. Correct me if I'm wrong, two things were identified. One, to identify the species of the trees to line the street, if they have done that on their plans. Also, the consultant questioned if any additional landscaping would be proposed around the building and its entrance. We have, there's a few plantings shown by the porch area, but we'll get back to that once we review this. Doug just pulled up the lighting cut sheets. For the proposed fixtures.
Should be flat lines.
Okay. Yep. Alright. So, while, and perfect, we have the landscape plan back up on the screen. On the plan, you'll see that ornamental grasses are called out here, proposed by the porch and deck area. Sorry, Doug, I'm gonna ask you to click again. The active projects folder, wanna pull up the 3D rendering that was proposed, the first building elevations folder?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep. And top file. Thank you. So, on, this is the rendering we've been working on, that the applicant's proposed. As you can see, the grasses are shown on the right side of the building, however, as the landscape consultant asked, is any landscaping eventually gonna be proposed here, the current site plan does not show it. Is that something the board would like to discuss? Have enhanced? Any suggestions, thoughts, comments?
I think that's entirely up to them, that landscaping's not gonna be visible from the road anyhow.
Does the rest of the board agree? Thoughts? They're showing trees up the...
I'm eyeing something up there.
They're showing trees up the way, I mean, I don't know, flowers, other, you know, I'm sure they're gonna embellish it from there and, you know, make it their own, but whether the board wants to require some base amount of planning, at least on that front side, up against the parking, they do also show some evergreens on the backside by the storage building, that shows in this rendering, but it showed in the overall landscape plan, there's some evergreens back by the maintenance building. But this shows the street trees going up into their property.
The lower left rendering almost seems to show...
Look at the view shot.
What is that in front of the building?
That?
I think that's a car, or it's gonna be cars. Cars in front of the building.
What would Bruce's thought?
He just, his question was just...
Asked off the question.
He just said, does the board wanna see any additional foundation plans for the building itself?
Typically, he works off what's proposed, and either agrees or disagrees, or says, replace this with that. Not to go and design the landscape plan.
You know, I'm, myself, I'm kinda struggling with the fact that it looks kinda like a barn, and how often do people...
Landscape a barn?
...landscape around barns.
I think that's what Jim was getting at, as well, one, the distance you're looking at it from, and what Mark was saying, the owners could make it their own once they're established and...
I imagine they're probably gonna do things anyhow during the season, and, but I, I'm not, I'm not necessarily in favor of any conditions that they provide any elaborate landscaping around a building that's that far off the road.
Anybody else? A good one?
I'm okay with it. It seems fine.
I don't know if we just wanna tighten the landscape before we jump into the architectural. We also have to consider our street tree policy, so we have to talk about sidewalk policy, street tree policy, but since we're on landscaping, obviously, they're proposing over 500 apple trees on the site. Does the board consider that sufficient to meet the intent of the street tree policy?
Well, to that point, and also the entrance drive trees that are proposed as well.
And typically, it's two trees per lot, every, or every 75 feet along the road, to kinda create a canopy in a neighborhood...
Right.
...look. So, applying it is a little bit different, but just wanted to make sure, even while we're talking landscaping, what's the board's thoughts? Obviously, most of it's just restore existing canopy loss, there is no trees on the site currently, or very little. But it's normally was originally intended for when they're clearing the subdivision, putting a couple of trees back, reestablishing that street tree, with new homes, new home construction, everything else, but...
Yeah, it was the intent at the time was so that when you, you know, take a helmsword way, as an example, it wasn't left up to the homeowner to plant trees in their front area.
It's immediate, because most people buy a new home, and landscaping may not be their first thought when they move in, and obviously, a big cost to buy a house, furnish it, everything else, landscaping comes three or five years down the road, now you've already got, you know, some trees along the foliage that have grown up and kinda had to recreate that.
Yeah, this to me, I look at this as different than that. My neighborhood was before that policy, and I wish the policy was in effect at the time.
What's the rest of the boards?
Yeah, I think it's fine.
I think it's more than adequate.
I think so.
Between what they're, what they're planting for their purpose, and the fact that the slope rises up so much, I don't see the need for anything else.
Okay.
Wanna jump back to the site plans one last time before heading into architecture? Pull up the creating plan, please. We just need the farmstead, I don't know. Okay, farmstead one, highlighted. Perfect. Just to clarify for the board, previously, there were some comments made in the public hearing about the previous drawings that were submitted back in the sketch plan, that a pond would have been constructed in the northwest corner of the property. Just wanted to clarify, more for the public, and again, for the board, that current plans that were presented at the public hearing, and the revised plans now, do not include a pond on the property. Everything is being serviced by the public water service. Okay? We got a few minutes, we'll jump into architecture. Two things, the architectural review, our architecture consultant has submitted his comments and several opinions for this project, but before we get into that, the applicant has provided revised floor plans for the building. And Doug, just, could you do like a side-by-side of the before and after for the second floor? Perfect. So, what Doug's pulling up is on the left side of the screen is the original floor plan for the second floor that raised several concerns, not only by the public, but by the board, as to the layout that was shown. It's described as an owner's office, but it had several features that, again, caused concerns about its proposed use. On the right side of the screen is a revised plan. It has scaled back on several of the details that are shown in the original proposal, does meet more of what we see as a, as an office setting on the second floor. Wanted to pull that up for the board, give everyone a chance to discuss it. The bathroom, as the applicant presented in the public hearing, necessary for the work that's being done on the site, oftentimes you're getting dirty, having a shower there is not only standard procedure, but also part of health regulations to make sure that you are clean coming in and out of the farmed area. So, again, on the right, the proposed, on the left, the original. Thoughts, comments, concerns?
Most of the topics that we brought up during the public hearing.
So, then getting back into the remaining architecture, mainly the outside design of the building. Can I just pull the memo up with the couple minutes that we have? We'll start on this, we're gonna have to take a recess from this before, as we have to go into the public hearing pretty soon. But just to queue it up for later on, staff and agency.
Zach, has the applicant had a chance to review and digest all those recommendations?
Yeah, the applicant was provided a copy of it. No responses have been provided yet, it was just this week that we got it.
Right.
Yes. So, it's also, we don't expect the board to have all its opinions at this time yet, again, it just came in this week. Everyone needs a little time to digest this, applicant time to digest this, provide some responses, but...
Obviously, these are recommendations from the architectural consultant, and I think he's looking towards what a pure barn look is. Obviously, it's up to the board and obviously, the consultant, even the applicant, may have provided their look of a barn, maybe their modernistic take on it.
Their own touches on it.
Yeah, their own touches and their own look at it, so I think, you know, the board needs to kinda weigh what elements of your consultant, whether you like it, if you don't like it, if you wanna take any of the comments. Obviously, he came out with their overall liking of the style and the look, but, you know, there was tweets, I think he said, that to make it more of a pure barn look to it. So, I think it's, you know, what's the board's thoughts of, you know, whether you wanna dictate, you know, what the applicant's look should look like, or if there's elements that are more in keeping with tradition and stuff. I mean, I think we gotta get going in a few moments, but, you know, I think those are some of the elements, you know, we can wait and see what their response is, yeah, we like some of the elements, and we'll look at taking those, or no... We provide our own design because we like that, and that's the style we were going for, you know, kinda meaning the image of a barn, kind of a barn, but we're not looking to mimic that.
Right.
Totally, so, at least that's what I took from Chris's memo, but obviously, as I said, we just provided him a comment, or a copy of it, have not had a, you know, full response to it, but I can understand, you know, if they're trying to provide their own look and their own style, and not have a, you know, carbon copy of, you know, a traditional he-barn or something of that style, so...
Then the architect, whether they like the parking around the site, do we make changes to the site plan?
Yeah, he did have a suggestion about the site plan as well.
Right, yes, I think it's significant.
There are, yes, there were some significant comments in there, and ultimately, it does come down to...
And those are elements, you know, we'll have to get into after the public hearing, is starting to talk about the layout of the site, and we gotta talk about the farmstead area, and how parking lays out, and the board's thoughts on circulation, and all those elements as we go through the checklist, so...
Okay, but that was just something we'll come back to, before we recess for a few moments, and then go into the public hearing. Just as an update to the public hearing item, from the pole cell tower on Schuhr Craft Road. We did, last week, at the end of the week, we did get the photos from the balloon fly, the applicant submitted them, we have copies also from some of the board members that were able to visit the site during the period the balloons were up, for comparison. And the applicant today provided responses to the PRC memo and revised site plan that addressed several of the issues and comments that staff had brought up. So, again, just so the board knows, there is revised plans that are out there that may come up this evening. You do have a copy of the original plan, so if there are questions, concerns, we can come back into the work session after and compare and contrast.
Okay.
Alright, ready?
To the October 13th, 2016 meeting of the Penfield Planning Board, I'd like to start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We have one item on our agenda tonight. The way the process works is Zach will read the application, the applicant will state their case, give us an idea of what they're proposing, the board will ask questions, and then we'll open it up to the audience for, for public comments. So, Zach, if you could read the application for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application number one, Nixon Peabody LLP, 1300 Clinton Square, Rochester, New York, 14604, on behalf of Verizon Wireless, requests under chapter 250, articles 6-6.1, 12-12.2, and 13-13-point, dash, point 11, sorry, of the code of the town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan, conditionally used permit and EPod permit for approval to construct a wireless telecommunications facility with 138-foot monopole tower with associated site improvements on an 11.13 acre parcel located at 1192 Schuhr Craft Road. The property is now reformally owned by Thomas and Diane Gibson and is zone RR1, application number 16P-0014, SBL number 094.02-1-1.6. Go ahead.
Good evening, lady and gentleman. My name is Tom Greiner, I'm an attorney with Nixon Peabody, here on behalf of Verizon Wireless, and with me tonight are, in going from my right to left here, is Mike Ritchie from Costage Engineering. Costage Engineering, site engineers of the project, Justin Ladd, an engineer at Verizon Wireless responsible for radio frequency issues, and Brian Tempio from Tectonic Engineering who is, or they are functioning as the site acquisition consultant for this project. Zach read the description from the notice. We're here principally because of a capacity and a coverage issue in the Verizon network in the Shoe Craft Road area. Just to bring you up to speed, we met with town staff early part of the summer, late spring. We then filed an application for a sketch plan review, received comments, made a submission on that. We were in front of you in August, and after we were in front of you, we put together an application, filed that, and I heard Zach during the workshop talking about the submission that we made after the balloon fly on September 16 that was done, the second balloon fly at this board's request. And then, of course, Costage Engineering made a submission today, right after last week's PRC comments. Bleach planning, county planning really had nothing of any substance to say. I think they think it's a local matter and really had no real comments here. So basically, and I'm going to just give the thumbnail sketch of the issue, and then if you have questions regarding the RF, radio frequency engineering issues, Justin will be happy to answer those. Just before I get into that, I will say that the board did furnish a letter after the August 11 meeting, or the staff on behalf of the board. You had a number of comments, questions, requests for additional information. Those, I'm just looking at our September 2 application, and your questions and the answers are on pages two through four of our September 2 application, and we can discuss those briefly as well. But what I'd like to do right now is just draw your attention, and it's in your application packets, but just in case anybody's interested in the audience, we've put up two propagations, and as the board will recall, propagation basically that Verizon Wireless has put together and other wireless companies do as well, will take the coordinates and the height above, means sea level, of a point, and will look at the signal strength, the frequency with which the broadcast is operating, the megahertz, and the signal strength measured in dBm, decibel measurement, and will basically plug into the software those factors, those variables, and will come up with propagations. Pardon me. So basically, on my left is the existing situation. So Verizon is building to a standard of neg 95 dBm. What you see in that purplish-blue is signal in that area that meets that requirement, that meets the neg 95 dBm, and it's provided by surrounding sites in Webster and in Penfield. Down here is our Plank Road site, which is really off a five-mile line road, there's one over here in Webster, here's Heritage Park Drive. Those are creating that purple-blue depiction of existing coverage at that neg 95 dBm signal strength. And what you see is in the middle of that, you see a problem. You see that there are areas that do not enjoy that strength to which Verizon built in this area. And Justin will get into this in more detail, but just to give you kind of one layperson's understanding, when you have surrounding sites like that, that are then trying not only to cover their own small area, but trying to cover into an area inside of them, they end up competing, creating signal interference, probably, they're definitely decreasing their own efficiency. You actually end up with a coverage issue, and you end up with a capacity issue as well. They're trying to cover into that middle, there's no dominant server, there's nothing really creating the rich coverage, the rich signal strength in the middle of all that, and so you have a system where you have sketchy data and voice transmission. And this site at 130-foot centerline of the antennas, or 134 feet to the top of the tower, is designed to solve that issue, solve that problem. And so the propagation on the right is same factors, same variables, with height, latitude, longitude, signal strength, frequency, and you see that it covers it very well, and is a good solution to this issue. So, again, that's the, maybe the 30,000-foot explanation of the RF. There's a lengthy description of the search ring and the site selection analysis in our application at Exhibit G. And as I said, Justin is here to go into more detail on the RF. Brian, who was the site acquisition consultant on this project, could also go into his experience looking at the alternatives, and we've actually shown you alternative by alternative and done an aerial map why other sites were rejected and why the site at the Gibson property was selected and that we focused on. With that, let me just, if I may, take you through some of the questions you had, and then I'd like to turn this over to Justin if you have more questions about the RF, and if not, or when he's done, turn it over to Mike Ritchie to just go over the site from a A&E perspective. So your first question, I'll be very quick here. "The applicant shall provide any available research that was completed to evaluate the co-location possibilities on existing towers in the area and to review municipally-owned lands as a possible site location." And we answered that in Exhibit G. Pictorially, there, and you have this in your applications, there is another tower here on Plank Road on the Schutz Apple Farm, and we show you in that, we actually submitted a propagation showing you that that site is too far to the south, and actually, we miss over half of the area we're trying to cover. But that, again, contained in Exhibit G. "You have landscaping shall be added to the site plans to provide an acceptable buffer for any utilities installed at the ground level." And Sheet CA 110 at the site plan Exhibit Q depicts proposed landscaping buffer that Verizon would propose here, and obviously, subject to your review and comment. Number three, the applicant shall provide the board with RF propagation maps, and we've done that, again, those are Exhibit G, and also the one of the Schutz Apple Mill that I mentioned. Question four or comment four is, "The applicant shall provide the board with any available information about security measures that are used to prevent trespassing and damage to the facility. Fencing details shall be added to the site plans." That was done, and we also go into, pardon me, the fence that would be proposed, six-foot fence with barbed wire on top, as well as, if you recall, we also talked about alarms or safety issues in connection with the equipment, and we addressed that on page three in more detail of the application. Number five, kind of related question, "The board expressed concerns for the proposed equipment platform with exposed utilities and stated in the work session that equipment shelter would be the preferred alternative for the site. Provide a response to this matter for the board." We do, we say that the equipment platform is the industry standard for these kinds of facilities, pardon me, and the standard design for all Verizon Wireless telecommunications tower sites. Actually, doing an equipment platform brings us more into conformance with the other wireless companies that have had cabinets, outdoor cabinets, for many, many years, and Verizon is really, in a sense, matching what the other wireless companies do here. And so we say further that the site's secured by means of a security fence around the tower compound, and that all utilities are protected behind a locked door, here, the door to the equipment cabinets, which are equipped with silent tamper triggered alarms. Number six, "The applicant shall provide the board with justification for the proposed diesel fuel source of the backup generator, and also confirm that the generator will have the capacity to support the equipment of multiple carriers." And the answer is that it's the preferred, diesel is the preferred fuel source over both natural gas and propane, takes up less space than a propane tank, can be positioned directly under the generator, does not involve coordination with another utility, as the case would be with natural gas, which experience has shown can create unnecessary problems that outweigh any benefits. What we didn't say here is that typically, every carrier will have its own generator. There are cases, and I know, Mike, you could probably speak to this more than I could, there are cases where, in fact, carriers do share generators, but that would be the exception rather than, I think, the rule. I think the custom is for each carrier to have its own generator. Number seven, I won't read that whole comment, but basically, you wanted us to do a second balloon fly because the town hadn't been part of the first one, and you wanted the second balloon placed another 400-plus or minus feet to the east, deeper into the property, would assist the board in evaluating the visual impact of the proposed tower to neighboring residents. The board requested this event take place on a Saturday morning with a starting time between the hours of 8:00 and 9:00 a.m., and coordinating with the planning department. We did that, was held on September 16 in the morning hours. And the results of that, as I said, were submitted last week. And then your final comment was that a special use permit would be required, a special use permit application would be required, of course, that's what our September 2 submission was as supplemented. So that kind of, just a summation of our responses to the board from the sketch plan review meeting in August. If you want to discuss the RF issues in more detail than I just provided, I would turn you over to Justin if you want to, if and when you want to talk about that. And when we talk about the site, I'd just soon give you to Mike, rather than me interpreting what Mike would have said anyway, okay?
Okay. Thank you. Ready for questions?
Ready for questions.
All right, Bill, do you want to start off?
I think I have one question for Justin, so I'll hold on to that one, but what about impact to adjacent property values? Have you done a study on that?
We haven't done a study in connection with this application
Right.
...over the years, especially earlier in the history of these wireless facilities. We've done, we have done studies, and other people have done studies, and we've had the opportunity from time to time to look at a neighborhood, like the increase in market value, the kind of average, what was the neighborhood doing? And then a tower goes up, and then looking retrospectively, and after that, at the event of the tower, then looking, what were the sales histories after the tower? And in fact, I think we just provided one of those in the town of Greece, I'm looking at Mike because he was part of that a few months ago. And basically, you don't see any material adverse effect on property values. In fact, ironically, and I think I mentioned before, like, I've been working on these for about 30 years, and over the last half of that time, what we find increasingly is that people don't want to live where they don't have. It would be an adverse, you know, when, you know, how the appraisers will do plus and minus adjustments, and I can't say I've actually seen this, but I've heard anecdotally that if people are thinking of moving somewhere and there isn't adequate wireless service, that that becomes a negative, just like it might for any other utility that they would want. So, short summary to a long answer, the studies we've done over the years show, don't show any material difference in the trend in prices before, after a tower.
Okay, thanks. Actually...
Could you send us a copy of one or two of those studies?
Yeah.
For the record?
Of course.
Great. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think I well asked you the question, I was going to hold for Justin, and if Justin is better prepared to answer it, I can wait.
Yeah, he can pop up.
But I know you looked at co-location options, but have you looked at a combination of maybe a co-location and a tower in another location that's a little less obvious?
Yeah, I think the, I'll just give you my answer. Sorry. My answer is part probably RF and part not RF. The part that is RF is that, and I've learned this from Verizon over many years and its legacy companies like Rochester, Tel Mobile, and so forth, is that a one-site solution is always preferred because you're not coordinating it with anything. In other words, if you can solve it with one site, you've probably got a better answer from an RF perspective. Here, you know, we're surrounded by sites, so to, so what would we do? Could we go on, for example, the Schutz Apple Mill site, and put some other site, basically, it would be right above the line here, if you look at the propagation we showed you of the Schutz Apple Mill, obviously, the whole northern half of that is not covered, and there would have to be another tower there. So you're not going to eliminate a tower from the area, you're just going to move it a bit. When you look at moving it a bit, however, there are a lot of dwellings to the north, and I'm not sure that that would be helpful because we'd be much closer to houses than we are here. So that's, I guess, also a non-RF consideration. The other issue is simply, if we did two sites for one, we would never have come up with the network that, I say we, Verizon would never have come up with the network that it has. So in theory, you could double or triple the number of sites and maybe make people less unhappy or more happy, but probably in practice, we would never have had this network because it would never have been built. Justin, do you want to give a more of a RF answer?
Yeah, if you could come up and introduce yourself.
Hello, everybody.
Talk through the mic.
My name is Justin Ladd. As he said, I work with Verizon Wireless. I mean, I think Tom covered it really well. What I consider is the impact of, I mean, yeah, anytime you introduce a cell site into an area, you know, there is impacts on like reliability because now we have another, the way I think about it is almost like people in a room. So if I'm a cell type and Tom's a cell site, we're both trying to communicate to you, the town board, but some cases you don't know exactly, like, if we're at a similar level, you might not know who to communicate with. So, and that's what we call noise and interference. So to consider putting a cell site further to the south or further to the north where co-location opportunities are, would have tremendous impacts to the reliability of Verizon Wireless's network. Not only because now we're not adequately addressing the coverage issue, but we're also impacting the efficiency and the effectiveness of our existing network. So that's my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. So if you go back.
How far south
Yeah.
...could you go with that tower? And before you... And before you get significant loss in signal coverage?
So, we looked at candidates further to the south and decided that they were not adequate solutions. And that's because the further south you go, the less effective you're covering this target objective. And furthermore, when you move away from the target objective, the way the antennas work is they have a beam width that directs most of the RF energy. So if I'm further to the south, now, not only do I, am I not covering the target objective well enough, but I would also have to raise the height of the facility to overcome moving away from the target objective. So.
So are they, I guess, aimable? Or is it just a circle of signal?
No, absolutely. So there's a wide variety that you can employ. Primarily, and I think in this case, we're looking at what's approximately 65 degrees in a horizontal beam width. And that's the main beam, and then vertically, it's typically about 7 to 10 degrees, depending on the antenna, the frequency. Each of these antennas have different propagation effects on the different frequencies, like our high-band, ADWAS coverage, significantly different properties than our low-band 700. So it does depend, but, yeah, to your point.
So it's like you have multiple antennas on the tower?
Exactly. And those are one antenna, and the direction of coverage is considered a sector. And, yeah, the idea is you direct most of the energy to where the high-density traffic is, such that you can serve them with adequate coverage. You'll notice that what was considered a null is the space in between those main beams of the antenna. And you'll notice significantly worse RF conditions for your, the mobile. So, yeah, but the point is to direct the main beam at whatever is.
Yeah. Exactly. Isn't that why the green blob on the right is not perfectly round?
Right, exactly. So each of, each of those antennas is propagating with that 65-degree horizontal pattern, and which produces a non-uniform.
So if you look at Exhibit G, where we actually discuss every parcel, every candidate, and look at that with the aerial map, the depiction of those sites on the aerial, and then the narrative in the, in the analysis, the write-up, you can see why they were either rejected or why they would be different towers as well.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just want to ask one question, either Tom or.
Justin.
Justin, sorry. What about height? Does it matter to you guys? I mean, will you accomplish what you need to with a shorter antenna?
Well, so I guess I'll step right in. Antenna height is a really important factor in radio frequency design. So if the transmitter is too low, then you're kind of surrounded by clutter. You know, the main beam of the antenna isn't able to reach the target objective, especially in this case where we're south of the coverage objective. I mean, if you're too low, then the antenna doesn't have the line of sight to reach that area. But if, at an adequate height, you have an unabridged or a clean path from the antenna to the target objective, it's worth noting, too, that you can also go too high and have adverse effects to the network. The way I like to think about this is really like, if you just picture a flashlight in a dark room, the closer to the ground the flashlight is, the smaller the footprint is. But as you raise the antenna, the bigger the pattern is. So now, in this network where we have multiple flashlights, the impact of raising the height too high is that, you know, now this site is covering other flashlight areas, and that introduces noise and interference, which causes unreliability and inadequate service or performance. So, so there is an appropriate height to decide towers. And the LTE design paradigm is to have antennas similar height adjacently, and the height of the surrounding sites are approximately 130 feet. So to go lower, and now I'm not covering the objective, and to go higher, now I'm introducing noise to the other sites and not actually helping this problem that we're trying to solve.
Just to add on to that a little bit, we did look at this at 110 feet to see whether, or we, Justin and his colleagues looked at it at 110 feet. At 110 feet, you visibly see that loss of the green, in other words, white, where you're below the proper signal strength in discrete areas or within the area we're trying to cover. And we can submit that for the board's consideration so you can see it. But that's why if 110 would have worked, and would have, as Justin said, sort of fit in with the rest of the system, Verizon would have built 110. 130 seemed to be the lowest height that would actually serve the purpose.
I had a few questions. The backup generator, typically, when is that operated as far as for just exercise?
Right. Typically, and I'm going to tell you what I think is the case, and if Mike or Brian or Justin have a different view. But it's typically turned on once a week for an hour, just to test it. And that usually would occur somewhere around 10:00 a.m., so that it's not, wouldn't be at a time that would be obtrusive. It would, it's actually a pretty benign time to operate something like that.
Is that during a weekday, weekend?
Weekday. It's usually, in fact, they used to do them on Tuesdays. I don't know if they're still doing them on Tuesdays, but that pretty much was the day.
And also, Tom, the color of the monopole and the antennas, we may have touched on that before. But I guess, I'm curious what the standard is or what you're proposing.
The color of the pole would be, basically, it's a galvanized pole and would be gray. The antennas typically white. I think there's some flexibility on painting antennas. Typically, they don't really get into painting the poles. That's been done. If you look around the throughway, you see a couple of blue poles and some blue freestanding towers that don't look, they don't really seem to be, they're not doing what they were, what I think whoever made them that color thought they were doing. But the antennas, white, obviously, I think to reflect sunlight. You don't want them heating up. But I think there's some flexibility if there was some color close to white, gray that.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious if Verizon has done some studies in the past on, you know, the, the background color obviously is going to change by cloud cover.
Right.
But if there's one that kind of makes it a little bit more camouflaged, if that's possible?
I think, I don't know if the gray pole was designed that way originally to, for color purposes, rather than just simply that's the way the metal looks. But I think over the years, I think there's been a consensus. I've been in hundreds of municipalities doing this, and gray seems to be the consensus in Western New York for, for these towers, I mean, as unobtrusive.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Anybody in the audience like to speak to this? Yes, ma'am. If you could come up and state your name and address, and please address your comments to the board.
Susan Richardson, and I reside at 1194 Schucref Road, the neighboring property. And I do have some questions. I think a very good point was brought up. What if it was at Chute's? And also, the Webster Town Hall, where there are existing towers currently? Those two locations, that would be getting it from the north and the south? If there was a way to get the coverage area by doing that?
So the question is to co-locate on both the north property and the south property?
Yes, someone brought up co-locating to the Chute's one.
Yeah, address, address your questions to us, and then we can.
Okay. It was brought up to co-locate to the Chute's and then have another site, and that would do the coverage of the green area? Would the Webster Town Hall, which is a northern site, and Chute's as the southern site, help the coverage area?
Fair question.
Well, just to speak to that point. So if you can see in this exhibit, like, coverage to the north is adequate and is fine. So to introduce an LTE transmitter at that location, A, I'm not sure it adequately subcurb, serve the entire objective that this site is trying to serve. And B, you know, it could introduce interference and noise that cause unreliability in the network, loss of efficiency, and.
Can you pick up the handheld mic or?
It's right below, right inside there.
Hello?
Is it green?
It's green, and is it on? Okay. So.
Is that good, Brian?
Yeah.
All right. You've just got to make sure that everybody in TV land can hear you.
Gotcha. Hey, TV land.
Millions of people.
Right, so, to move that far to the north, I mean, now you're affecting the neighboring sites. You're not addressing the problem. And to reiterate the point on cell spacing, which is the point I'm trying to make, is that like, you know, so actually, if you'll see on the attachment with the arrows and the lines that demonstrate the town hall location and the Chute's apple, actually, it is pretty clear that actually, you're going to introduce another competing cell boundary in the middle of this coverage objective, which is the dense residential homes and the coverage gap. So now.
So the main part that you're trying to cover, I thought, was originally stated by Mr. Grinder that it was the northern section, but you seem to be saying that's really the southern section. Which, which section is the area that you really want to cover?
This section, this section, and this section. So basically, every place that doesn't have adequate coverage.
Maybe I could, maybe I could, what I was trying to say before, pardon me, was that we looked at the Chute's farm as a single-site solution, and it was, although it covered the southern half of the coverage gap, it really left the northern undone. If you look at, just to say, just to continue what Justin was saying, if you, we looked at the Webster Town Hall as well. And the problem is, a two-site solution there actually adds to the problem.
It really does.
Because remember, when I started, saying is that you wanted a dominant server in the middle of the issue? Because right now, these other sites that are trying to cover, say, where Mrs. Richardson is and where the Gibsons are and so forth, they're, they're trying to cover it from a distance. And all they're doing is compounding the coverage and capacity problem because they're actually, in a sense, they're being treated as noise. And so you need to sort of split the distance and do something in the middle in order to actually solve the problem without compounding the problem. And that's the problem with that. I don't know, Justin, if we have, like, a demonstrative exhibit, like a propagation, that would show the signal, the interference issue, like we do when you have coverage and no coverage? You can see it here. No coverage, coverage. I don't know if we have, or if you have, anything that could depict this.
Simulation of.
Exactly, of this interference issue. But that's what these guys are paid to make sure doesn't happen, and that's the problem. In fact, I'd be willing to say, if, in this particular case, if a two-site solution did work, I don't think they would be totally opposed to it. The problem is the two-site solution here actually ends up compounding the problem. And if you look at the spacing that Justin was talking about, the spacing is pretty amazing here. You can see that there was a real design starting, I mean, some of these sites, the Plank Road site I did in like 1997, and they go, they go back in Penfield, and the spacing is, is actually been pretty phenomenal in leading up to what we have here. And that's what they're trying to preserve, is that spacing between sites. Okay? Sorry. It was your turn.
You talk about spacing between sites and that we need to add another site so it's not interfering. So what does this do for all of Penfield? Because you're talking about the spacing where the cell towers are, and with this increased use, this increased activity, we need a separate tower. Some of these towers are only a mile or two apart. Are we envisioning a landscape in Penfield where we have a tower every mile? And I think it's important to note, it's not that there's not cellphone coverage. It's that there's not the four LTE coverage that they're looking for and that Verizon is promoting. This is not a dead zone. And if you look at dead cellphone coverage as a website, this isn't even coming up as a dead zone for cellphone. This is not a safety issue. This is for streaming of movies and data. It's not that people are experiencing phenomenal drop calls, and I'm living next to where they're going to put this tower, and I am not having problems with drop calls. People coming to my house are not experiencing drop calls. When I've asked around the neighborhood, they're not experiencing drop calls. So there is coverage. It's the four LTE that they're trying to boost up to, which is Verizon is promoting. And they're going to make money. This is what they're trying to pitch. And what I would like to see is more attractive towers. If we're going to put towers every mile, you can't stick up a metal pole in the beautiful rural areas and suburban areas of Penfield. So I guess, going beyond this particular site, what does Verizon have on the agenda for the rest of Penfield to cover these spots that don't have four LTE, that have cellphone coverage?
So, just to say, if we were to pursue the plan that she was suggesting, we would actually need cellphone sites every mile. Because now, if the two-site solution, A, we have sites, two more sites in this area, and B, you know, it's still not solving the core issue here. And that is that there is no dominant server that can provide adequate coverage in this area. And in terms of not being a coverage gap, so voice is also carried over our data network. It's commonly known as voice over LTE. So basically, to say that there is fine 3G underlay coverage, maybe fine at this instance, but as technology advances and as 3G is becoming phased out, there needs to be adequate service to carry that voice traffic. On top of that, if you look at the capacity demand and the rate at which capacity, or data is used, we would need a cell site every mile if it isn't adequate or properly designed, where there's good cell spacing, there's overlap that isn't interfering with other sectors. And, yeah. From an LTE design perspective, I mean, as we note in the RF search ring justification, you know, cell spacing is a critical aspect of network design for the long-term solution. And, you know, to pursue towers north and south, you know, isn't going to provide the coverage that this town in the Webster needs to move forward. And I'll let.
Actually, Justin, would you like, this is, I mean, showing a capacity issue, and you can explain this better than I can.
Right, so our south Webster site is, it's attachment to in the search ring justification.
Plank Road site.
Oh, this is actually.
If you look at Exhibit G, on the first exhibit, there's two reports at Exhibit G. If you look at the first one, and you look at page eight of nine, that's attempting to show a capacity, like, an exhaustion issue. So it has the Plank Road site, which is to the southwest a little bit. So why don't you take that?
Right. So, I mean, have you guys ever been to, like, So, I mean, have you guys ever been to, like, a graduation, a sports venue, where you try to connect, try to make a call, but you can't? Because there's so many people on the network trying to, already connecting, that there aren't any resources on the tower to talk to your phone. So basically, if this problem is left unaddressed, there are serious consequences to public safety and to our customers, that, you know, they won't be able to connect to the network when they need it most. And then that's why we pursue these capacity solutions, is to get ahead of the curve. So we, the situation never happens where there are, the cellphone towers taking so much traffic that it can't take new connections. So, that's what Verizon wants to prevent, and it's sound with the industry.
Okay. If I could just add on, I'm sorry, Mrs. Richardson. Just to the, and to your point, that Verizon's trying to make money. I know that it's said as a negative, I mean, wasn't extol, she was not extolling the virtue of Verizon for trying to make money. But I just wanted to say that, of course, it wants to make money, just like a heart surgeon, cancer specialist, hospital, I mean, all of us. So, however, Verizon isn't into wasting money. So, it's proposing this, and has actually been working on this for a long time, and actually spending a lot of money in researching what to do, what the solution is, in order to, sure, to compete, there is a profit motive, but there's also, like, somebody like Justin and the people that have been working in this network, some of whom I've worked with for over 25 years, are also really proud of the network and just simply want to do a great job. Not to get melodramatic, but as he, as Justin said, there are public safety considerations. None of us wants to, as a layperson, like, just as a, like a resident somewhere, be in a car, be somewhere where we really need help and can't get it. The police don't want that, the fire doesn't want it, the ambulances don't want it. So, there's some, there is something to be said for trying at every point in time to, to get as best service as possible. This isn't whimsical. I mean, this wasn't, let's, you know, get people excited by a site on Shoe Craft Road, this was really to solve a real problem here. And as that exhibit on Page eight of nine shows, that Exhibit G, there is an exhaustion issue that's looming, and they're trying to get ahead of it.
Thank you. Why don't you state all of your concerns, instead of the back and forth?
Okay, sure.
Okay? Thanks.
Okay. One of the things that I wanted to bring up is, in that, the chutes road site, which is referred to, I believe, in the document, as the SVA tower, that it was considered. But it only had available a rad center at 135 feet. And so is the chutes tower being ruled out as a solution, because there's not room on the tower? And if there's not room on the tower, could they build another tower? Could they extend the tower that's there? So that was one of the questions I had. Let's see. And I guess, the proposed location will significantly impact the beautiful view from my backyard, and the view from my front yard. I don't think any of the pictures of the balloon launch have been put up on the screen, but it is significant to me. And this tower, I believe, will decrease the value of my property. I'm going to lose in both areas. I'm going to lose aesthetically and financially if this tower is erected where Verizon is proposing. The tower in its proposed location now is closer to my house at 1194 Shoe Craft Road than when the, than the property owners actually at 1192 Shoe Craft Road. So Verizon did approach us about putting the tower on our property. We wanted it farther back, and negotiations did break down with us. As if you look through the document, with many other people too, they looked at the church, the church was not interested in the location, they looked at the townhomes behind my house, they were not interested in having a cellphone tower. I am not the only person who does not want to live next to a cellphone tower. And I understand, based on what my piece of property is zoned, that this is a potential use for my neighbors to put up on their property. I am repeatedly asking you to please push the tower back, make the tower look better. It is possible to do these things, and you have the power to do those things. It doesn't have to be an ugly tower. It doesn't have to be so close. Nobody has to totally lose in this. The Gibsons can get their lease money, which is about $12,000 a year or more, as more people go on to the tower. And Verizon will get their tower to make the profit, the community can get their cellphone service. If you push it back and you make it look better, I don't have to lose so much financially and aesthetically. And listening to this, this generator is going to go for one hour every week. Now put two other providers on the tower, and I have three hours of generators checking out, unless they're all testing their generators at the same time. And I believe they've already mentioned that there are other providers interested in co-locating on this tower. It won't just be Verizon. If you look at Chapter 250 of the zoning and land use setbacks, it states, "All freestanding telecommunications towers and accessory structures shall be set back from abutting parcels, public property, or right-of-way lines a distance sufficient to contain on-site substantially all icefalls or debris from tower failures, or 200 feet, whichever is greater." My property line is approximately 110 feet from the fenced-in area. It is nowhere near the 200 feet. And I do understand that when some of this zoning rules were put into place, they were concerned with towers toppling, and they wanted the tower to fall in a safe zone. But it still had a minimum of 200 feet. This is nowhere near 200 feet. I implore the Penfield Planning Board to spend the time and dig deeper into the proposed tower. Is an additional site necessary? Verizon says there is a need. I have yet to find a person who is having problems with their cellphone in my neighborhood or when at my house. Check out the site, Dead Cell Zones. And you will see along Lake Ontario, where people have called in and reported dead zones. And if you've been down along Lake Ontario, you know there's a dead zone. But it's not happening to many of the people I know in my neighborhood. Verizon says there is a need. Where are the people saying there is a need? Currently, there are three towers less than two miles away is the town of Penfield's long-term plan to have a cell tower every mile. That's essentially what this is adding up to be. Do other towns have towers every mile? What's the long-term plan here? Then, moving on to Section 250-13.11, Telecommunications Systems, it states, "Minimum visual intrusion." This is not a minimal visual intrusion. "To protect the natural features and aesthetic characteristics of the town of Penfield, the location of this tower, as currently proposed by Verizon, does not minimize visual intrusion." You can move the tower back, you can camouflage it, you can get it to be less offensive. Much, much taller than the trees, this tower is going to be. If you looked at the balloon launch, the tower does not protect the natural features or aesthetic characteristics of this area. In Section 250, Article 13, Discussing Conditional Use Permits, it is stated that "In permitting a conditional use permit, the board having jurisdiction may impose any additional conditions, which the board considers necessary to protect the best interest of the surrounding property." Please have the tower moved farther back and camouflage the tower. Please review the Penfield Code in regards to telecommunications towers. The above-noted section goes on to state, "Among other things, reasonable controls contribute to the good appearance of the town. Stabilized property values and in general contribute to the preservation of a pleasant community. Three cell towers in less than two miles is enough. Please, please co-locate," I understand they're saying we can't co-locate, "onto an existing tower, or make this tower look less offensive. Camouflage it and move it farther back." In regards to the impact on my property value, are you aware of the survey conducted by the National Institute of Science, Law, and Public Policy entitled, "Neighborhood Cell Towers and Antennas: Do They Impact a Property's Desirability?", dated 2014? It shows that homebuyers are less interested in properties located near cell towers and antennas. Of the survey respondents, 94% said cell towers would impact their interest in a property and the price they were willing to pay for it. When it came to purchasing the property, 79% said, "Under no circumstances would they ever purchase a property within few blocks of a cell tower." Yes, that still leaves 21% that it's not going to deter. And almost 90% of respondents said they were concerned about the increasing number of towers in residential neighborhoods. The above survey reinforced the findings of a study by Sandy Bond, PhD, that was published in the Appraisal Journal in 2006 entitled, "The Impact of Cellphone Towers on House Prices in Residential Neighborhoods." The study found buyers would pay as much as 20% less for a property. So I lose money, while my neighbors make money, and Verizon makes money. It's simply not fair.
Do you have a copy of that study?
Yes, I do.
Could you submit it to the...
Yes. If cell towers in one's neighborhood are not detrimental to the surrounding homes, why in 2007 did the pound town of Penfield end negotiations with Clearwire, citing that a tower is not in the best interest of Penfield residents? The tower was located at the Penfield Community Center. Visual intrusion was cited as a concern. The town did not want a tower in Greenwood Park either. The tower at 1192 Shoe Craft Road will be a visual intrusion for me. Is that fair and equitable? I do have additional references, which also discuss the decrease in property values for homes that are near cellphone towers. Have the members of the Penfield Planning Board looked into the future of trends in cellphone technology? Will the current technology become obsolete, like VCRs, silver halide photography, 8mm film, to list a few? As reported by CNBC in 2015, advances in wireless technology could see cell towers becoming a thing of the past. In that report, the founder of Parallel Wireless told CNBC that "There's no reason why your cellphone isn't the cell tower of the future." Papa stated, "We're just at the cusp of chips coming out, where a $300 chip can power an entire cell tower." When you get that far, it's not that much farther to a scenario where when you're finished with your cellphone, you can hang it on the wall, and it adds to the cellular network. Before saying yes to this cell tower, the board needs to have a solid grasp of where future technology is going. Understand the technology before saying yes. A few additional comments. If this site is so important to Verizon, why, when I did not want to live with a tower in my backyard, were they not interested in flat-out purchasing my property? I offered it to them. If they need this location so much, surely they would be willing to invest in moving the tower farther back and camouflaging it. The article, "Antennas: Out of Sight, Out of Mind," discusses how the city of Phoenix in 2009 made all new cell sites to be disguised. Local towns have camouflage towers, like Mendon with its silo cell tower. Aronique's St. Margaret Mary's Church in February 2016 was on the agenda for the Planning Board meeting for consideration for Verizon, a Verizon cell tower that was going to be disguised as a bell tower. Verizon can disguise the tower. They can move it farther back. They still get their tower, everyone gets the service that is needed, which, as a cellphone user, I still am questioning, and my view would be improved. Disguising this tower is doable. The bigger question is, will the Planning Board of Penfield stipulate that the tower needs to be disguised? Will the Planning Board do this for all the residents of Penfield, to keep the visual obstructions from being every mile in this town? It's our town. We can choose how the towers look and where they will be located. A tower does not have to be an industrial-looking pole. Once again, I do not believe it is fair or equitable to place such an obvious visual obstruction so close to my residence because of the negative, negative visual impact and the loss of value for my house. It is reasonable for the Planning Board to have Verizon move the tower farther back and camouflage it. You, the Planning Board, would not be saying no to the tower, but you would be taking into consideration how this tower will impact a resident of this town. You would be actively choosing to value the visual appearance of the town and the concerns of the residents. You would be a Planning Board that values the beauty of the area, and would be a board that acknowledges how much of a financial investment a house is to a homeowner in Penfield. Will the Planning Board protect the property value of Penfield residents? Will the members of the Planning Board protect the beautiful view from my home and the open-space rural feel of this community? Farther back on the property and camouflage it. Verizon could still get the tower they claim that they need. Moving the tower back and camouflaging it takes into consideration everyone's concerns. It attempts to address all parties' needs. It is called compromising. Under the Telecommunications Act of 1996, local governments can regulate the placement and construction of wireless facilities. I am asking the Planning Board to please be good stewards and protect the beautiful views in Penfield and in my backyard. And I do have the supporting documents that I cited. And I was there when the balloon launches were done, and I also took pictures that I would like to share with the town. There are ones that show the beautiful view that there is now, and I actually put a cellphone tower where they're going to put it. It's not three little balloons in the air, it's 130 feet to the ground, with a whole area around it that supports the structure. So you can see this. Turn it over. Look at cellphone towers. They are not beautiful. I've included some pictures of the property that I own. Then, I have the base of existing cell towers around the area, and they are labeled, this particular one is from the Webster Recreation Center. Please note the screening at the base of the tower. It appears to be, on each side, three to four pyramid arborvitae's. They only grow about three feet wide. They are not really camouflaging the tower. I was quite surprised when I went to the tower in Penfield at Harris Wayland Park, there is no screening at the base of that tower. I realize it's on town property, but it's by a playground, in a park. It's where people go, it's how our town is represented. And then, I did include pictures from the balloon launch, showing the towers in the two locations coming up my driveway, showing from my front yard, and from down at my dock on my pond. And once again, I'm going to reiterate, move it farther back, disguise it, camouflage it. And I have information from Larson Camouflage on camouflaging cell towers. This one here I found on the internet, which I found, thought was particularly interesting, it said, "Cell tower is sculptural art." I actually had to go back and make sure it was a cell tower, and not just like an antenna tower, because it really is attractive. Here's the information from Larson. And if you go in here, and there are other camouflage companies, you can actually see some examples. And I know we think of the cell tower dis... And I know we think of the cell tower disguises of the past, the tree with three branches by the side of the road. They've come a long way. This one here is a water tower, which would be applicable to a rural area. The ones at the town locations, why couldn't they have looked like flagpoles and had a flag on top? They have a bell tower for the church, and then they do have some trees, some are pines, some are palms. And I think it's important to note once again, when you look at the list of all the sites that they went through to check in here, they were listed. Lighthouse Baptist Church, property owner did not want the tower located there because of the, they couldn't put it at the location that property owner chose. Julie Rosbach, the owner never responded to a cellphone tower being placed on her property. The Villas at East Hampton, the association voted no to a tower on their property. Susan Meckler, or Susan Richardson and Scott Meckler, agreeable terms could not be met. We were not the first ones they came through. They went through many people before they got to the Gibsons who were willing to put the tower on their site. Everyone does not want a tower. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to comment on this application? Any other comments from the board? Any final words?
I would like at some point maybe a copy of everything because that was well-done, by the way. I mean, I know you spent a lot of time on that, and Ms. Richardson raises some issues. I think I'm familiar with that 2014 Values Report that she mentioned. And again, we talked about submitting additional materials that the chair asked for. We are, I think, as you know, we are looking at moving it further to the east, which you were asking about. We can look at camouflage. We talked about this, I know, at the Sketch Plan Conference. Context really is important in camouflage. I mean, camouflage that doesn't have context, really all it does is draw attention to a site without necessarily making it look more acceptable. I was actually the attorney for Rochester Tel Mobile when the silo was done in Mendon. And of course, that was right next to a barn. Flagpoles won't work. Some companies seem to erect flagpoles. Verizon did, or its legacy company has done a couple, and they're terrible, and they don't work for Verizon.
Why don't they work?
Because what you have to do, and Justin could give you the technical explanation, but in order to have a flagpole that's the size of a flagpole, in other words, something, not like this, but something like this, you have to flush-mount the antennas. And in Verizon's system, when you flush-mount the antennas, performance goes way down. I don't know whether it's interference or, isn't it your return path? Isn't it the, right, the receive?
But additionally, it doesn't provide enough space for the number of antennas that we need to survive.
So your flagpole would be huge in width.
We have one at Creek and Empire.
Right, not a Verizon one, but if you may. So I guess my point, though, is camouflage, we can go over the different kinds of camouflage, and we can explore reasons, pro and con, and look at that. I tried to write down everything Ms. Richardson said, but I don't think I could. But if I get a copy of everything, we will respond to her point. As I said, it's obvious she's done a lot of work. So we'll look at that. A couple of things. I may have misstated the generator when I said it ran for an hour, and we'll check on that. It may run during a specified hour. I think I may have led you to believe that it runs for an hour. We will check on whether, which way that is. Does it run for an hour or does it run within a specified hour for a period of time? The issue of setbacks, we are applying to zoning board for an area variance for setbacks. I will say that the tower is totally contained in the Gibson property, so although we need a setback variance, and we'll remeasure that, but I, you said 110 feet. I think it's 139 feet. But, yeah, we'll, I mean, that's an objective fact. We can look at that. Minimum visual intrusion is in the ordinance, and I think, you know, obviously there's some subjectivity in that, and we'll need to look at that. What's minimal visual intrusion to one person is not to another. So whereas we might think that by keeping it as short as possible to still do the job creates, and doing a pole instead of a freestanding tower or a guide tower, we might think that constitutes minimal visual intrusion, but we'll need your input and also, again, I'm sure residents' input to really sort of get a handle on what that really means because it's different in different cases. The issue of decrease in property values, I've addressed, Ms. Richardson has addressed. The board's requested further information. We'll look at hers. We'll give you ours. I will say that this is considered a public utility for zoning purposes, and so although not trying to diminish the issue of property values, in other words, not to say, well, it's a public utility, so people are going to have to like it and whether or not they suffer a loss or not, that's not the answer. But I think we have some good information on that, and we'll just have to look at that. If my neighbor paints their house purple, it might diminish my property value, but that may be, at some point, many things can diminish or increase property values that are subjective, and so that's not an easy answer. We all have different answers to that. We didn't say, and if we made you think we did, Ms. Richardson, I apologize. We've now, I've just checked with Brian, we don't have any interest from other co-locators. In other words, we haven't contacted any of the wireless companies, nor have they contacted Verizon. So if that somehow got implied when we were at the Sketch Plan, that's, as far as I know, not true at all. So there's nobody that we know that's interested in this. I'm familiar with the bell tower at St. Margaret Mary's because that was our application. That project is on hold, but you can actually look at the bell tower up on Clem Road in Webster. It's at a church. So again, what I was saying about context before would be important. Camouflage really depends, you know, there's no Romulan cloaking device. There's no chameleon, you know, where we're going to make it invisible. So camouflage is really to divert, I think what you're saying, from some sort of industrial looking, to make it look like something else, and context is everything and also feasibility. So we will work with the town to see if there's a possibility there. In terms of this technology going away next year or very shortly, I doubt it. And hopefully Justin doubts it because that's his job. But actually, in connection with the Mendon Silo project back in 1993 to 1995, I sat there with the Mendon Planning Board who said, "Why are we even doing this? Next year, these are all obsolete, and it's all going to be done by satellite." Well, the only company that tried to put wireless up in the sky via satellite went bankrupt. That was called Iridium. I believe it was maybe a Motorola, maybe subsidiary or something like that, went bankrupt. So however, but to the point that Ms. Richardson was making about if they do become obsolete, as this board knows, there are surety bonds, removal bonds, so if it does become obsolete and you approve it and we build it and it becomes obsolete, then the town will require us to provide security so that the funds are available to remove it. So there is that as a safeguard to the town. So having said that, it's enough, probably enough time. We will get a copy of everything. We'll look at everything. We'll respond to all of it. And with that, I think we're done, unless Justin or anybody, anything else?
We just the board. The boards are not, the top ones are not.
Oh.
You need to stand up to them.
Well, I can do the, thank you, Brian. And again, I didn't have a chance to see what Ms. Richardson was submitting, at least up close, but in our balloon fly, we, if anybody was there, there were three balloons. The bottom balloon was at 134 feet. The top balloons were there because sometimes we learn by painful experience that if you fly a balloon at the height that you were trying to get to, and then you start going around taking pictures, you don't see it. And so they fly higher balloons so that, in this case, the postage engineers who are driving around taking pictures will at least know where the balloons are. So you're looking at trees, and unfortunately, the balloon, maybe by perspective, is below the trees, and so you say, well, we don't know where it is. Where do we take the picture? They fly two higher balloons in order to locate where the actual bottom balloon is. So that's, I don't know if Ms. Richardson knew that or whether her simulations took that into account, but we can, that's the reason, and we can, we can look at her pictures and see whether or not they were accurate.
That's good information to know.
Yeah. Thank you. So with that, as I said, I think we're done.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Appreciate it.
Nobody has anything further? We will call this hearing closed and adjourn back to...
So it's adjourned, not closed?
Correct.
Public hearing is closed.
Public hearings. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Would you like to continue with the application? Would you like to continue with the application that was just heard or continue over?
I think, why don't we go back to Hook and Appel and finish that up? I think we were last in talking about architecturals.
Yes.
So you had, your board had just received the comments from your architectural consultant with his recommendations, thoughts, just provided those to the applicant, have not received a response from them. I don't know if the board has initial thoughts on them.
Do you have any sample materials?
That was one of the items, is whether they've provided colors and material information, but typically the board gets color samples, material samples.
Physical.
One of the questions signed is whether the board wanted to see that.
Physical samples as well as what's listed on the rendering.
Absolutely.
I should note that the rendering does list out the types of materials, but as Mark was saying, physical materials are obviously different from what we see on the screen.
Seeing colors and things, and you look at that, and it's okay. What is...
Well, and it's always an interpretive of, I mean, the red on the screen here is different from the red on the projector versus what the plotter prints out.
Truly base your decision.
Are you going to go through each point or are we going to ask the applicant to respond?
I mean, I guess if, I mean, you can go through each point and whether the board wants to consider those, doesn't consider those, lets the applicant provide their own response, I guess it's up to...
If you'd like, do you have Lopez's memo? Scroll to the last page.
So most of the things that he's talking about are architectural in flavor and keeping with the traditions of an agricultural-looking structure.
Yes.
Which we would typically follow Chris's advice, those things, and, you know, the one significant thing that he's talking about here is relocating the parking to the back so that it's visually screened by the building.
Right. And some other elements in the building design. What I asked Doug to pull up on the screen is the last page of the memo from our consultant. Kind of summarizes everything that was stated in the previous pages, offers a rough sketch of what his changes, what his opinions, how they would take effect on the proposal, and a little bit of history as well. Again, it kind of goes back to, as Mark was stating before, drawing off influences from truly authentic, real-life farm structure, building a barn.
In this region.
In this region. In this region, correct.
That's important.
Versus what the applicants proposed and the specific touches they've tried to incorporate in their designs. So as Mark was saying, it's a balancing act of how much do we take from the recommendations here versus what's been proposed, and what do we hear back from the applicant in response to this, if that's the board, if the board would like to see that first.
And we know in the past, we've had, you know, the board has instructed the two architects to kind of go back and forth. I think most recently was Pan Am Plaza. Chris had some comments, the board liked some, didn't like some others, had the two architects get together and kind of come up with a, maybe a happy medium of it. You know, that's one option. If you can just say, provide responses back, you know, to the comments, they may say, yeah, we understand, but we're looking at a modern version of it, or I guess we can instruct them, say, you know, have the applicant's architect talk to your consultant if you'd so like, and then, you know, see if they can come up with a blend of the two or at least. It's up to the board.
What would the board like to do?
I like, my opinion is the applicant should respond, have the two architects get together and walk through this and see where they can compromise, and then they can respond to us. I mean, that's worked well in the past.
I think in this particular case, with the sensitivity of this project, I would hesitate to use the word compromise. I would ask the applicant to address our architectural consultants' comments and resubmit to be consistent with those comments. I mean, you know, this is a very unique structure in a unique part of town that needs, if it goes, it needs to have a unique flavor. I like the idea of reclaimed barnboard and cupolas and carriage-style barn doors, and, you know, all of those things are consistent with something that would look like it was a natural part of that portion of Penfield. I'm not really in favor of architectural compromises.
I think the landscape consultant, now that's his opinion, and, you know, and it's so very subjective, so I think we also have to take into consideration what the applicant, I mean, they're the one that's actually going to fund this if it goes. Terry?
I think it could with Jim, you know.
I like Chris's comments, especially integrating, he's going back to some of the elements of some of the past architectural barn structures. And actually, I think it's a lot more appealing seeing the cupolas on the top that are kind of, you know, designed like some of the apple structures were in the past. I think I, also, I think they should really weigh heavily with what Chris is saying in the review.
Okay. So we got the jury right there.
What I'm hearing is responses, provide responses and revised architecturals based on recommendations of the consultant.
There's some compelling reason to differ.
That would be part of their responses.
Should be stated, but...
Any issue with having their architect contact their consultant if there is a question?
I personally...
I just worry about the back and forth, you know.
For clarification...
Okay.
I think that's necessary.
Would you like to review the hours of operation, Harrison? Uh, let's see here. All right, so, what we just pulled up is, and then else, staff has provided, based on public comments that were received, that outlined hours of operation of similar uses in the area. Board asked staff to vet those out, basically. And we've come back with this document that lists off, through our research, what we determined to be those hours, based on contact in those established businesses. And the second two pages are excerpts from the public comments that were submitted. So, this page that's on the screen right now is, again, the excerpt that was submitted of those hours. Most of them were consistent with what we looked up, there were a couple discrepancies. For some of the operations, Casa Larga being one of them, since they have several different activities at their facility. I was just going through the list. We viewed the Blue Toad Cider in Rieda and also in Victor. They had hours at both locations that were the same. Five to nine Thursday, three to nine Friday. Would you like me to read the whole list or?
No.
You've got Casa Larga, Myers, both in Hilton and Webster. Ontario Barn Vineyard, Chutes, with the Blue Toad tasting room. They also offer a tasting room and sale of hard cider there at Chutes. Gustafson Winery in Spencerport and Apple Country Spirits in Williamson. There are a couple on there that were not included on the public comments. But we expanded our search a little bit and found other uses that were similar. Included those for your reference. Based on that, the applicant's hours, those stated earlier, usually ending at eight or nine, yeah, seven or eight, seven or eight P.M. Sunday was, yeah, Sunday was a flexible date. Based on, from my understanding, it's based on the harvest season. If there's a demand for it or an opportunity there, it would probably match something similar to Saturday.
I believe if you look at the video, they indicated no longer than seven o'clock on Sundays.
On Sunday, thank you. Okay. What is Chutes? Chutes is zoned one acre.
It's going to be right on the edge between one acre and...
Or R1.
R120.
I believe Chutes is a one acre zone district. I'm going to zone it, oh, it's gone.
Yeah, the R1. Just into it, so. So, one acre zoning, R120 is just adjacent to the west.
So, again, just provide that if the board had any concerns about the proposed hours of operation that the applicant proposed.
Okay, thoughts? Bob?
I think the, I think the hours seem to be in line.
So?
I think they're reasonable.
Terry?
I don't know, I probably do.
I agree.
Let's see here. Secret?
We're still waiting for your secret consultant to provide his opinion on where they fall in that. Didn't know if the board wanted a request of a long form. Just as we get into it, I could see talking about the view shed, some of the other items that the public has brought up.
I personally think it's a good idea to have a long form.
I think it gives additional material until we have a determination to say it's just additional information for the board to consider, for your secret consultant to consider.
Absolutely.
What he comes back with, his recommendation, and obviously, the board will have to, you know, weigh into that.
How does everybody else feel on that? About the short form, I think...
We'll also address, provide some better response to some of the comments that we had from the public as well.
Yeah, I agree.
We should have that, I'll talk, Doug, we should have that next week.
His opinion, Doug's opinion.
In the meantime, we'll ask the applicant for a long form. Provide that for additional information for the board's considerations.
Good.
Farmstead area?
Yeah, I'm going to kind of jump into the checklist, I should check it off. Some of the items, I think, talking about the layout of the property. As one of the items, we get into, obviously, the board's, you know, charged with the site plan. The town board has handled the use part of it. This board is charged with the site plan. And they provided a sketch showing first the setbacks. So, that was something negotiated in the original easement. So, there's a 150-foot setback all the way around the property that cannot have the building in it. So, that kind of set up the boundary. And then, as we get into the EPOD areas, the lower left, there's actually highlighting is actually a stream buffer. So, we have a 75-foot stream buffer from centerline, so it's a 150-foot swath around it. They highlighted that. And then, they've taken our steep slope EPOD areas. Those are EPODs or environmental protection overlay district areas. They're not tied to Secret, they're the town of Penfield's own environmental areas. So, that's separate than the state requirements for environmental review. That's a higher level of review that the town takes on itself. But those are areas that were adopted by the town board. We did a recent update, we did our code update. Doug, you know, worked on updating layers with the EPODs, went to the conservation board. It's based on the slope of the land, so we've updated very recently our, very recently, our EPOD areas, and the town board adopts those. So, that's, again, there's not cohabitions to be in those areas. Our code does not deny somebody access to those, it's just another level of review and higher, you know, level of work included in those, so they've worked to kind of be out of that. One of the items that will still be standing, then after this board makes a determination, is what does against the farmstead area, where are the best locations for the building to be? So, as we get into layout and building placement, parking, area placement, vehicle circulation.
Do you like the developer map?
Yeah, so we can pull up the map that's...
Staffing agency?
Zach has kind of gone through it, I did color coding it. We took some liberties with the map that they had, just to kind of make those areas pop out a little bit. So, you have a 150-foot setback area, kind of a no-build zone for, for the structure. It's in red around the outside. The water course, EPOD areas on the left in the light blue, the purplish colors, the steep slope area. And their area of disturbance that they're requesting or proposing is in the green area in the middle. So, want to get the board's thoughts, feeling on citing of the buildings, citing of the parking, where the stuff goes, where you think the best fit is? Are they proposing it in the right spot? Is that the best location for the building?
So, with regard to the topography of the site, where they're proposing the real improvements are really the only viable place for the real improvements, if for no other reason than for stormwater runoff. The difficulty that I have here, and one of the questions that we posed to the applicant during the hearing, was how they determined where the farmstead area was and the size of the area of the farmstead area. And in their response, they mistakenly assumed that the farmstead area had to contain five acres of land. So, I believe that the farmstead area that they've delineated here is much larger than it needs to be. And I don't, I don't see any value in, you know, proceeding with this very large farmstead area. This board is charged with making a recommendation back to the town board for the location.
And the size.
And the size of the farmstead area. So, I believe that we should ask the applicant to redelineate the farmstead area to contain only the buildings, the structures that are being built. No impervious surface or anything else. And then, when we see what they come back with that they think might best suit their advancement of the property, we can agree on whether or not we want to send that to the town board for our recommendation.
And just to clarify, I'm going to outline in red, or with a laser pointer, what the applicant indicated as the farmstead area of the five acres on the property. And it's this dashed line that still remains on the map while my hand is shaking, sorry about that. That is not in color yet. That was the five acre area that they delineated.
So, it could really be, you know, a quarter acre, first acre.
Correct. The green is the proposed limits of disturbance. And that's around four acres, just above.
So, I think they were trying to show at least through that, you know, kind of the impact area. Initially, they were showing the five acre was kind of the bubble of being outside EPOD, the setback areas of where they could place it within, so as far as...
And trying to...
So, you're suggesting that it wouldn't be contiguous, really just where a building footprint is?
Well, the two structures, yes.
What about the dumpster enclosure and the...
Well, that's the structures technically, no, not the...
It would be harder to map, though, if you were to do it, if you were to...
Actually, it would be quite easy to map if, if you follow my thought here. It's really just a rectangular area. It's a farmstead, it's designating where the structures will be built.
So, you're, is it, are you talking about it being contiguous though or not contiguous?
Yes.
So, I mean, it's...
Continuous.
Yes.
Four separate...
All right, that would be one, yeah.
It would be one area that would be perhaps 20% of the area that they're showing now.
So, you're talking about, you know, right?
Right, exactly.
Just a rectangle.
Just enough to accommodate their layout for the three structures. Within one farmstead area.
Because the benefit of that, remember, if you go back and look at the easement, is what was permitted on the farmstead area is where the barns, greenhouses, dryers, silos, fuel tanks, generating support buildings, farm stands, farm market buildings. So, once you define that as narrow as you want it to be, then the rest of it would be just farm area, which, you know, they could put things like, I think, like wind fences or things like that, but not structures.
If this project gets legs at some point in the future, and it actually goes anywheres, and they are successful, they can always go back to the town board and ask the town board to reopen the concept of the size of the farmstead area. That's beyond the purview of this board and...
So, you're saying is that they would limit their potential expansion space unless they get...
That's correct.
...further dollar of approval from the town board.
Correct.
Because they wouldn't be able to build in, they wouldn't be able to build, like...
Right.
So, if this area up left... It would be farm area, not farmstead, so they couldn't put a silo up there or whatever. But as proposed, I mean, farmstead is, you know, big, and then they can, they could put all these other structures in there.
Is the board comfortable with the, I guess, the area that it's in? I mean, I guess that's the first question. Satisfied with where the buildings are located now? Is there any change those you'd want to see? Obviously, designate a box around that we can keep there, but is that, is that the right location?
Well, you go to the south and you got slopes. You go to the northeast.
You could go to the northeast a little bit more than they have, but all you'd be doing is increasing the area of impact.
Right.
You know, be more roadways and more gravel and more sewer for no gain.
All right, from that standpoint, that makes no sense where it is.
What's their benefit of reducing the size of the farmstead?
Their benefit?
Yes.
Probably is a little.
No.
It's our benefit.
This would be more to the benefit of the community. You know, listen, there's, there's people in this community that believe that if the project were to ever be approved, that there would be a possibility in the future that it would become something more than or greater than what's being proposed right now. A larger farmstead area feeds into that, that concept or that perceived possibility.
But you said they can go back to the town and ask for approval to expand the size.
They'd have to go to the town board to get that amended.
Yeah, you'd have to amend the easement at that point. They would if they wanted to.
So, they'd be limiting themselves?
No, we'd be limiting them.
We'd be limiting them. I'm just understanding. Understand why they'd be looking at, but they didn't have to.
Well, they would do that because that would be a condition for this board.
You know, all right, the scenario that it doesn't work out, but sold to somebody else that doesn't have this use, they'd have to go back to the town board to get it modified anyway.
If they did anything different than what this uses, they'd have to go back to the town board anyhow because it's within the conservation easement.
Yeah, what's everybody's thoughts on that? To me, it's a probably a reasonable compromise. Basically, it gives them everything that they've actually asked for in print and statement.
Gives them less than what they've graphically asked for.
Right, they understood, but it's like, okay, put your money where your money. If this is truly what you want to do, okay. That's, you know, that's what you can do and you can't do more. You're saying you don't want to do more. So, you can't do more.
That's what they've said. They said they have no intention of ever increasing production at this location.
Right.
That's part of the public record.
It's easy enough to ask them to designate a smaller box around that area. I think if we at least can settle with the board that is deemed the appropriate area before we ask them to define it further, we can have them define a box, but should it move north or should it move south, you know, the general area, I mean, look at, you know, vehicle circulation around the site. Obviously, they'll have trucks with delivery, what they said, you know, one or two trucks a year coming to drop off apples.
Right.
You know, so obviously, they're going to have, you know, stuff to circulate that, tractors to...
Emergency.
Emergency vehicles, thank you, you know, to circulate it.
So, is it, given that, I mean, does that need to, a delivery vehicle or an ambulance or a fire truck navigating through the site, does that need to be defined as the farmstead area?
I think that's...
Can that be? You know, and if that's the case, is it, okay, 20 feet around the buildings or something, you know, so that...
Impervious surface is not part of what's defined there. So, I mean, I, personally, if they came back with a rectangle in area that was 20 feet or 50 feet offset from, from the extreme boundaries of those three structures, it wouldn't bother me. All, all's I'm saying is that they're showing five acres because they, they thought that that's what they needed.
Right.
And I don't think it's in the town's best interests to make a recommendation to the town board. Not that they would even really accept that. They might send it back to us and say, we don't, you know, we don't like your recommendation. So, I think in this way, you know, this is at least a way to address concerns of the neighborhood and limit any potential for future expansion of structures and give potentially the town board a recommendation that they might, that they might concur with.
Even if the farmstead stayed at five acres and then you were to put additional structures on there, they're going to have to commit to the town board approval, correct?
That's correct.
But this is a site plan improvement, we have to come back to the planning board.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
So, location.
Terry?
Good.
How do we...
We're just going through our checklist, it's capturing the...
Yeah.
Ultimately, you know, I think a memo to the town board, should we get to the end of providing that, we can start drafting based on... we can start drafting based on discussion items and the board can, you know, at a future meeting, work through exactly, you know, what you want to provide to the town board, which your feedback would be on your thought process through how you designated that farmstead area and at least give them a recommendation.
If this board were to approve the application, it would be, you would want to condition it upon getting approval of the town board for the location of the farmstead area together with any other required amendments necessary to implement the plan. So we still have to go back to the town board for final approval, but... You know, and there's some question about the five acres, but, you know, I think it's reasonable to ask them to do something less than the five acres here.
Okay.
Alright. Just going through our checklist, we have handicap accessibility. Obviously, that's, if the public establishment, that's a given. That's something that staff will look at. You know, the building department is part of the building review, would look at.
At those apartments and...
Handicap, you're showing a sidewalk, a pathway to it.
Subspaces. Site plan's a little clearer.
We've talked about snow removal, typically, I think that's more imperative on a smaller site.
Yep.
You know, these designated areas for snow storage and everything else, we do that quite a bit. On areas as large as this, obviously, they have room to accommodate, you know, plowing. The site is, they're showing gravel, driveways and parking lots, a lot of it with perking, kind of meeting the GI requirements of having an impervious surface, but obviously, there's room to plow off on that. Dumpster location, they've identified that, is the board comfortable with? Their dumpster location, pad area, as well as the debris, spoils, storage area for the...
Yeah.
Apple waste.
Daniels?
The one criteria, pedestrian circulation. Out in East Penfield, a lot of people will walk or bike. Are there any opportunities on the site plan that maybe haven't been addressed for that kind of activity?
One item, we didn't have it on our checklist, we need to add, is the sidewalk.
There's no.
Going down to the...
Well, sidewalk waiver.
Page two.
Thank you.
Page two, it is on there.
But, I mean, the sidewalk policy is another item that, again, it's handled by the town board. The town board is working on a change in the policy, kind of east of 250 is they're looking at as a designation in more of a rural area. Whether sidewalks required or not, but that's, again, was a recommendation, an option for recommendation from this...
Right, whether they build the sidewalk or they have the sidewalk waiver and the money from the waiver goes toward the...
Yeah.
Construction of the sidewalk on Crowncroft or Atlantic or...
Yep, so again, that's, that's under the purview of the town board, but what's the board's thoughts on?
They've shown easements, correct?
Sidewalk laws.
I mean, it's a rural area and you'd have nowhere to go where, and where in the grand scheme of things is Sweet's Corners Road and Dublin for sidewalks.
So we have a lot of comments from the public that talk about the very active neighbors.
Agreed, jogging, walking, biking.
Joking, walking, walking dogs, walking children, strollers. So maybe this is one of those areas where we suggest that they actually construct sidewalks, particularly in light of the fact that there are, there's a contingent of people that are worried about the possibility that a lot of traffic might put people in jeopardy now that pedestrians can be off the roadway.
I buy that argument, however, once you leave the property, there's no sidewalk.
Well, that's true, but if the neighbors are walking back and forth from the subdivisions further south and up and through that area, I mean...
Is there a sidewalk on Wayland up to Dublin?
Yes.
Okay, so it ends at Dublin?
Yes. I'm sorry, yes, just short of it, yes, thank you, Dave. It is just short of Dublin Road, so it comes down the majority of Wayland, but it does not connect to Dublin.
Hasn't the town studied, don't they have a list of priorities where they want to put sidewalks?
We have a sidewalk list, yes.
Okay, would it make more sense than the, if they ask for a sidewalk waiver, they take that money, put it in the funds for the sidewalks, because there may be areas that need it more than Dublin Road? I agree with Jim, that's an active area, I mean, they're biking, they're walking, and I drive by there a lot now. I'm watching people, what they're doing, there's always people walking, walking, their dogs. There's other areas in Penfield as well. That may need it worse with the higher traffic. So, I see both sides of the argument.
I do too.
Something that you take time to think about?
Is there anything else we can dip for the board?
Honestly, that, this is, you know, we've got...
This is the first time we've...
Come up with some renovation, but as far as that goes, well, we don't, it's not...
And usually, if they ask for a waiver, we just say, okay.
Yeah, most of the time, but, or in a subdivision, you know, where, hey, we want it on both sides. Have it on one side, it makes no sense to have it on both sides most of the time in a residential subdivision.
There's a width of the property, about 1500, 1500 feet.
We did a rough estimate from their driveway going north. You know, if it was the time of Sweet's Corners, it was about 1100 feet.
1500.
What I brought it out, so 1500 on that end, and so about 2200, half a mile, you know, maybe.
The decisions and half, dozen half you made tonight, we are just bringing these items up as part of the checklist, so that we know...
Ultimately, the decision's up to the town board.
Yeah, they can say anything that we want, the town board's gonna do what they want, so.
No, but, I mean, this is an item we can come back to, you know, whether you want to provide a recommendation, not provide a recommendation, or we can hold on that, everybody wants to kind of think about it.
That's a lot of sidewalk.
A lot of sidewalk.
A bridge to nowhere.
Yeah, and what would it complete somewhere else?
Unless there's a master plan to put a sidewalk down Dublin, I'm not aware of that, but maybe.
I mean, long term, obviously, we're taking sidewalk easements on every property and everywhere in Penfield, but long past my lifetime will we get out to East Penfield?
Well, one of our sidewalks are now, definitely, we gotta get the easement.
And they're showing one, and it's been this board and the town board's, you know, policy to take a sidewalk easement no matter what, because at some point in life, far beyond our age, you know, maybe it's necessary and it may make sense to connect all that area together, so why not get it when you can?
I think I'm living a good life.
It'll be done.
Maybe my life, then, if you...
Hoverboards.
But, okay, we can, we can put a placeholder on that one and come back to that item. Limited of disturbance, they provided their green buffer line. I think they're kind of showing a minimal area of disturbance surrounding the breeding.
Little arrow at the bottom of that circle. Tree left, no, not that one, oh. Complete it, there it is.
Yep.
4.06, that's been identified.
Mm-hmm. Um, breeding and erosion control. Kind of, you guys? I mean, it's something we look at as staff, obviously, there's a super driveway coming in. They're showing stone check dams to, you know, during the construction phase to slow down the water for erosion to that. They're a large parcel site with gravel parking lots, most of their stuff will perk back in. The amount of impervious area, you know, laid out across the entire site, you know, I don't see there's a huge stormwater generator on the site. The original pond was not for stormwater. They had looked at it, one as an aesthetic pond, and two, possibly a storage area that they could water the trees from, based on them taking it off. I think there was some public concern about it being close to the intersection and possibly being a hazard, so I think that's why they took off the proposed plan. Being agricultural, being less than five acres, there is no easement requirement for them to do stormwater or quality treatment on the site. Okay.
Just kind of hit stormwater.
So some of these things are gonna change when they redesign the site plan, parking behind.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna mandate that they comply with the architectural consultant...
Recommendations.
I mean, I guess that's a good point, what is the board's, we kind of glossed over that one.
I didn't think we did, I thought we, I thought we were gonna ask them to incorporate Chris's recommendations.
Typically, there's a little give and take.
What's the thoughts, I mean, we had an architectural consultant in the past that got into site plan issues. We directed him back to just consider the building. Obviously, it's up to the board of how you want to, you know, talk about the parking lot, open it up. I mean, if you want to move and adjust it, I mean, this is what they've shown in the past. So the architectural consultant, restricted to the architecture, let the landscape, get to the landscape of the board and staff handling the site layout and everything else. The board wants them to look at or investigate moving the parking somewhere else, we can pass that along.
So, as an architect by trade, I can tell you that this site is very different in the regard that the parking and the vehicles that are going to be in parking are going to have what's going to appear to be a very tall building in the background because of the amount of elevation that this site rises. So, from the vantage point of the public way, looking up here, it's not the same thing as driving down a road and having the building pad a foot or a foot and a half above the roadway. But I think getting back to Bill's point, I'm not sure that you're, that you're still with me on the rest of the recommendations.
No, I mean, everyone has a different vision. The applicant has a certain vision, I would have a different vision, you have a different vision. I don't think in the past we've ever mandated that an applicant comply with the architectural consultant's vision. We just haven't done it, that I'm aware of.
I can't remember the time.
But if we're gonna make that determination, we need to let them know that now, so they quit spinning the wheels. But then they can re-lay out the drive-in, the parking lot, everything else.
Well, let's take the parking lot away from it for a minute and just talk about pure architectural vision. What Chris is saying is, this is good advice for, and let's not forget that the applicant doesn't have an architect on staff. He has an engineer who's drawing architectural plans. There's a big difference. So, and I don't think that his engineer had intended to create really any type of a significant architectural image. I think, I think he, I think the owner went to him, I think he laid out something. When we asked him about the design, you know, he clearly said, well, I went to Carini and just told him, you know, I need this much space and then I want to have an office up, and he just threw in these things, so he was surprised himself to find some of the residential elements and...
It looks like it's glorious.
I, you know, I'm not a, I have no objection, if we mandate, they do it, they do it.
So, let's take another poll.
Just to clarify, the floor plans and architecture were designed by a separate firm, then BME.
Well...
I didn't know if you were referencing BME as the engineer designer?
No, no.
Carini.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that, I'm sorry. Okay.
Sorry, I know very well. So, let's take another vote on that issue with the board, so we can move on from this.
Okay. I guess the, this sub-vote on the floor is, do we have a mandate to the applicant that they redraw the site plan and the architecture to match our consultant's concepts? Or do we allow for the applicant to respond with, oh, those are great ideas, yeah, we want to incorporate them? Or, well, we don't want to do that because of this reason?
Well, I think there's another option. Maybe I didn't make that clear. I'm suggesting...
I'm taking it as, you're saying, I like Chris Lopez's recommendations, you're gonna do what he wants you to do, come down high water, and that's the end, you have no opinion in the matter, and...
That's not what I intended.
That's the way it came out, at least that's the way I read it.
So what I'm suggesting is that we tell them to address all of the comments from our architectural consultant.
That's a different, that's a totally different thing, and that's...
And that's usually what we say.
You and Bill are not in disagreement if that's the case.
And if they come back and they say, okay, we've changed, in most cases, they change just about everything. I remember specifically the bank that never got built at the corner of Harris Wayland Road there, and Chris wanted them to have true divided light windows, and they came back and fought that element because it's a cost issue. But at any rate, I'm not suggesting that they do everything to the letter of what Chris is saying, and I don't think Chris ever intends that people follow his recommendations to the letter. I think their recommendations, they're fairly specific to this site and this type of structure, and let's see what they come back with. If they, if they come back and we think as a board that they missed the mark in something significant, maybe they missed the mark, but we like their version better. I mean, that's okay, I'm not suggesting we be inflexible, but I don't... What he suggested is, we tell them, well, you contact Chris Lopez and you guys can work out a compromise. I, what I said is, I would not use the word compromise. We simply suggest that they address the recommendations of our consultant, let's see what they come back with.
Okay, so, actually, I think we're just arguing semantics, you're both agreeing on an agreement.
They come back and forth.
Just depends on...
That's true.
I happen to like relocating the parking lot, I think that's a good idea.
So we actually don't have to vote, I think we're all in consensus on this.
I just, I would prefer you don't use the word compromise, because many applicants will say, oh, that's a license to do what I want to do.
We absolutely want them to address the suggestions of the architectural consultant.
Fair enough.
Absolutely.
Fair enough.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but typically, when it goes this route, we get responses back addressing the comments. We also, at the board's discretion, we could provide those back to our consultant if necessary, so he could review those, facilitating the review process.
That's where I was just kind of getting the thing responded back by Monday. Do you want them to wait till next meeting before the board, if we get comments back from the applicant? Is the board okay with us, you know, sending them on to Chris? In the meantime, we're having them have a discussion, just so...
That's fine.
I don't think we necessarily have to give it back to Chris. These aren't, these aren't the kinds of comments that I necessarily, I mean, if they come back and what they reply with really deviates from Chris's recommendations, then maybe it would be good to have the backup of additional comments from our consultant.
Yeah, obviously, if they say, we agree with everything he said, there's no reason to further...
Great.
Yeah, employing plant architecture and have them do an additional review. If they come back saying, we oppose everything he says, we'd rather have this, just keep the process, you know, moving. We can come back to Chris and say, well, they've hear you, what they're recommending this, or that, just do we have enough information to come back to the board that you've got something to consider at your next meeting to...
So, I'm gonna open up another door again. You mentioned the parking and relocating it. As one of our checklist items now. Is the board comfortable with proposed or flipping?
So, again, I think...
Would you like that to be a response?
This is not something that Chris typically comments on, but I think he commented on this because from an architectural point of view, looking up a tall hill and a large structure that will have a bunch of vehicles in front of it, it will have an impact. Well, it's, but that two, that two-story structure at the angle of the pose is going to appear much grander and much larger than it would be if it was at eye level.
Something we can come back to. We don't have to make a decision tonight. It's just something to think about as well.
How much of the building will you see from W? Because you're looking up the house.
Give a, give a view showing the 3D rendering. There is, second page bottom and all that.
See, I don't think you probably wouldn't, if that's accurate, you wouldn't see cars.
Oh, no, you do. They've got a car there.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Answer from higher angle.
I mean, from the standpoint of trying to keep this looking like a rural architectural barn, a rural architectural barn wouldn't have a bunch of cars in front of it.
You could put tractors there.
Right. Yes, true. You know.
Tractor parking.
Or a, or a 1964 GMC pickup.
They have off-site parking when they take a shuttle. It's a tractor or something.
Hey. Shuttle, tractor limo. I think Wickham's already.
Would you like to come back to this issue?
Tractor shuttle.
Well.
We're going to tell them that we can have them respond.
They got to, you know.
Yeah, let's let them respond. Let's not design it for them.
Potentially redraw the, the site plan requesting, I mean, that would probably bring the building forward. And the parking goes behind the building. You know, you're looking at having customers parked at the business end of, you know, the back office part of the, the site.
Go to the area, I guess, the, the site plan.
And.
Because it would be.
You know, you'd have to move the building forward at least, what, 20 feet so you could fit the parking spots.
They could actually shift everything back a little bit.
Let's let them come back with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe the rendering was based, they showed all that landbank parking, which was on the outside of the loop. Whether the rendering was showing that and now with the cars on the inside.
Yeah.
You know, at that angle, maybe that would take away some of the stuff. We can ask for clarification on that.
Correct.
Yeah, we showed a car on the outside loop and that was what the view was. At least from my standpoint, I liked that the cars were facing in rather than out, thinking of headlights at nighttime and stuff. For the landbank parking, if, you know, people are there, I mean, nine o'clock now, but it was getting dark at six o'clock earlier. You're going to have headlights and just that they're not beaming out over the top. I kind of like the idea of at least having the, the cars pull in, the lights would face towards the building and you back up, you know, to, a lot of people pull in, some people back in. But a lot of people pull head in, you know, would help to buffer some of those lights and the glare in the evening. And so at one point of looking where you put the parking lot, do you have the lights on the outside that are kind of overlaying the area?
I, I get that. I think that's starting to split.
Obviously, it's up for the board's, board's decision, so. Okay. Going down through the checklist, you see we've talked about landscaping.
So not to rehash this, but we're asking them to consider all those recommendations, including putting the parking in the back.
Provide a response or a sketch to show why or why not or?
Yeah.
You know, if you, if you guys think it's appropriate to, to put in this next letter, a question, did the rendering view from the road depict vehicles parked in the landbank space or in the delineated parking spaces?
Right.
That might answer our question right there. And if so, perhaps that they could just show us a different view of the model that they built. And that would negate the need to put the parking in there.
Okay, so I guess coming back, the concern is seeing the vehicles from the street. So if they can show a rendering with the cars on the inside or?
I'm, I'm guessing that that's what Chris had in mind, but he usually doesn't comment on those things.
If they come back with landscape on the outside or buffering that, you know, kind of softens the, the cars. Obviously, that's something the board can look at as well as, if that's, if that's the concern of the board is, is the impact of cars from, from Dublin Road.
I think there's a lot of directions they can go. Let's just wait to see what they inspire.
Okay. Sorry, just ready. Hurry up, make sure we capture.
I got it.
Again, continuing through the checklist if the board wants to continue on down. We've kind of talked about landscaping in the earlier half hour, lighting, talked about that. Impact with adjacent lands, noise, glare, thoughts on those. Obviously, lighting, we've talked about lighting. We're talking about car and vehicle locations, noise impacts. The easement does not allow for, party house does not allow for elements.
Noise.
Does the board want to talk about the outdoor patio music?
Yeah, so we, we asked them whether or not they were going to broadcast music. We, we got kind of a non-committal response from the applicant on it. But I still think that it might be prudent to suggest to them that there would be a maximum decibel level of anything that occurs out there. So if, if we don't ask them, then we have no recourse in the future.
Now, we're just talking about pipe door music on the deck. Obviously, it's an agricultural operation. We don't dictate farmers.
We can't dictate.
Farmers harvesting apples, time of day, state law. It does not have restrictions on when a farmer can be a farmer and when they can.
We're just, we're just talking about music.
Okay, just want to clarify that if we ask for, are you going to have piped in music? Are you going to have an acoustic guitar, probably you're sitting outside, just random thinking.
Just details.
But as far as him harvesting apples at a certain time of day and the decibel level of the machinery.
How, how did we handle that for Jeremiah's? Because we talked about that. Noise coming off the property to be adjacent neighborhood.
We just had recommendations.
The town board actually did some sound studies where they actually had some sound instruments at the location. And then they went to the, the areas of the neighbors' concerns and they played music at certain decibel levels and then did some readings on a survey. From the adjacent properties, could you hear it? What was the level of sound? What was the impact? You know, obviously, over distance, you know, Bill.
Well, I mean, I remember, to me, the, the most potentially a good comparison would be the water ski boat.
Yes.
I mean, when they went in, when they had proposed it and, you know, everybody on Helmsford Way was crazy with, okay, the sound of the inboard ski boat is going to be keeping them up all night. I'd be willing to bet that almost nobody on Helmsford Way even knows that it's back there.
Okay, I mean, we can ask for at least something in writing about their intents for the.
So, you know, that's a large area for the sound travel. You've got trees, you've got references there. So I, I would guess you're going to have to have a pretty high decimal level if you want to hear that off that property.
Well, actually, what, what I was suggesting was that we would limit their decibel levels to a point 150 feet beyond or 250 feet beyond the structure or something like that. So then, so then there's simply no chance for that kind of facility-generated noise to negatively impact neighbors.
I agree.
Okay, next item to resume this traffic. As we've heard, or at least the last time we had a traffic study was for the 86 lots at the corner, northeast corner of Atlantic and the Five Mile. Industry standard typically is if it's less than 100 units, the traffic study is not warranted. They didn't provide one to the board at that point. Does the board have concerns for traffic? Want or desire a traffic study for this, this use?
No.
No, low, low impact use.
I think it's very low. Maximum 13 parking slots, which, how often are they going to be full of 13 cars there?
Utilities?
Yeah, the next one talks about the comprehensive plan easement. We've kind of gone through that. We've gone through, the town board has, has vetted out the use. And again, it's up to the purgory of this board. We just added in there as, as an item. Utilities, storm sewers, you know, obviously, they're going to put a splash block to close stuff off. I mean, even infrastructure, sanitary sewers. They are proposing to provide sanitary sewer to the site. They're proposing to install a trunk sewer. We have a mislabeled sewer across the street and just down the, down the way. They're proposing to connect into that right there and then bring that up on the west side of Dublin Road and provide it to their facility for that.
So they'll allow any of the neighbors to tie in?
Yes.
Make sewers available?
We've asked them to put it as low as possible. So in order to accommodate as much, you know, capacity or capacity, excuse me, depth to the properties across the street, we require them to put in clean outs or a stub for each property.
In the right way.
In the right way, through the right way line. So as part of them installing that.
So that's a potential, potential big time benefit to.
Town board can entertain a sewer district if the town board is petitioned by those four property owners.
I grew up on Habsburg Septic and, you know, how many times it had to be dug up and replaced.
Those five property owners could then petition the town board to form a sewer district, you know, for themselves and then tie in that sewer as well. So we've asked them as part of their design to put the sewers as deep as they can beyond what they need. So just additional cost, but in order to make sure that it's for the benefit of the community that those homes could receive sewer as well.
Okay.
Um, septic system is not applicable, public water. They are showing public water to the facility. They're also, they've been working with our farm marshal to show the actual hydrants proximity along the property frontage. And they're also showing a dry hydrant connection with a tap at the bottom and a connection at the top that the fire department can hook up, pressurize the line and then have an active line hydrant right at the top of the hill. So boost the existing pressures for that. Easement's property maintenance agreement. Typically, this board requires a property maintenance agreement for any business. I assume the board wants to do that similarly with this project as well. Talking about maintenance of the site, condition of, you know, trash, hours of, they wouldn't be sweeping the parking lots with gravel, but, you know, maintenance hours, those typical things.
Yeah, do we have those kind of agreements with other agricultural uses? Do all the farmer captains sign those things? Do, do we have a gross?
Depends because we started using them at a certain point. Other uses may have been in place before we started using PMAs.
I mean, it's.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. Obviously, we don't have the ones that have gone back, you know, most recent stuff. But if it's agricultural, typically, I'll have to look and see if we've applied that.
I think that Wickham.
Yeah, Wickham would have been the most recent one with his, his facility on 250. We can check that. Um, next item goes into EPODs. I think we've kind of gone through those. There are no wetlands, floodplain, woodland. We've talked about the steep slopes and the water course in the pod for the site. And they're showing that they're going to avoid those areas. Architecture, we've gone through that and.
The waiting.
So the red is the steep slope areas, the blue is the, the water course that we've seen on their plan. Architecture, we've asked for responses to that. Sidewalk policy, we've got to put a pin on that one and come back to talking about sidewalk compliance. Street tree policy, we talked about in the draft. The conventional plan, the town on 278 are not applicable in written form. They did receive county comments on March 4th, 2006.
16.
16, thank you.
Don't travel in time then.
Zoning board, we're not asking for any variances in this. We may take that spot and I did put the town board farmstead in there. Whether the group wanted to provide a, a letter of memo to the town board with kind of the thought process and looking at the farmstead. Conservation board, I received two letters from the conservation board, one in February, one in August. And then PRC, last memo was in February.
Okay.
Is there anything additional that's not on the checklist? Items that the board still wants information upon. Obviously, have some items tonight. We've still got secret determination we're waiting for. We've asked for the long form EAF. We've asked for delineated farmstead area. We're asking the applicant to address plant architecture's comments. We're asking about the rendering of the cars in the picture and we're asking about the music and the decibel levels of any outdoor.
Did you want details on any control systems or is sufficient lighting shape so far for the cut sheets? If I remember correctly, I believe the applicant planned to have all lights off when business was not active.
We can ask for that in writing, provide a public testimony to it.
Lights along the roadway, why would they keep that lit if the gates close locked? I wouldn't pay for that.
Maybe just ask for it in writing then?
What else?
Does the board want, need, does it further this discussion? So the board want to make a motion to.
Yeah, you want to move the table?
So. Based on the provisions.
Second by Bastian.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Burton, Bastian, Tim Bastian.
That was to make sure that you're still awake.
All of you keep you awake.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Mauer?
Hi.
Tiding?
Aye.
All right.
Tower or other table application?
See the other table application, of course, and go back. Yeah, we're looking at the.
H2, Torby.
Torby Family Medicine, 2221 Penfield Road. Application was tabled last meeting and from September 8th, public hearing meeting. Any responses to PRC and revised plans? Also, they have to go to the zoning board next week for. Sorry?
Yeah, they do on the 20th.
For a setback variance for being adjacent to residential area. Doug has just zoomed into the revised plan that was submitted to, today?
Yep.
Today. Well, I'm getting, um, the board asked in lieu of, of fences a buffer to show some landscaping at the southern edge of the property, they've shown three trees, three arborvitae's and three shrubs from left to right on the map there. Staff reviewed that. We had a few concerns getting the existing conditions out there and the type of plants that are proposed as it might still impact the neighbor to the south. Recently, that neighbor reached out to the billing department, once reviewed, once receiving their postcard for the zoning board application. And they explained that they are still having issues of lighting from vehicles at the Tim Hortons property, actually, coming through their property and have additional concerns about this, understanding that parking would go there. The board did address the lighting at Tim Hortons in the past by adding some low-growing arborvitae's that would shield headlights. Those have been installed and been in place for a number of years now. But in response to that, Mark was actually at the site and had taken some photos of what Doug is zooming in on, the existing landscaping. And as you can see, there are two trees in the back existing that are supposed to remain, as well as this one in the back. This tree, however, closer to the home, uh, to the structure, would be removed as the parking would come down the side. Part of the board's reasoning for asking landscaping in the back was to offset the landscaping that would be removed in exchange for the drive aisle.
Well, we also thought that the neighbors would find landscaping out of berm a little more favorable than a fence.
Yeah, that is a great defense.
I would like to pull up the photos that Mark saw.
Active projects. Now, they, I mean, obviously the board can wait till the, the neighbors expressed interest to Harold as they got the proposal, Zach said for the zoning board application. Expect the neighbors to come in, and so this is a, a view down the side of the building.
There's an, um...
Um, where the drive would come in, that's looking up towards the building.
On the side just. Next, there's a view.
That's looking down where the cross access may happen between future properties, looking west. That's looking towards Tim Hortons and the, kind of, the lights coming off of Penfield Road and out of the...
I think northeast.
Yep.
Should be another foil.
One more, and that's looking, we see...
One more looking straight back. That one. So that's taking faces from the corner of the house, the rear corner, I think?
Mm-hmm. So it's the people in the townhouse.
Yeah, I've kind of tried to, you know, take the point of view of your car coming into the back, kind of what your view is, about five feet higher than what the grade is to the back. So you kind of have the headlights will be up higher to begin with and then kind of drop as they, they come into the site. We can wait and see what the zoning board, either the zoning board may require a fence, because they're asking for less setback than is required, just being a BNR zone to a residential. They're asking for parking within that fifty-foot...
Yep.
Buffer area in the back, so one, the zoning board may come back with that's buffer and a variance for it. Um, or we can ask for additional details, right now they just say landscape mounds. Um, and they haven't given any details that a four-foot mound with landscaping on top of it, or is that a one-foot little... Mile with a couple of, couple of shrubs?
What about giving this to Bruce?
Yeah, I thought we did.
This thing go to Bruce, because we just got the landscaping.
Oh, okay.
We just got it today, so...
Okay, yeah.
Do his thoughts and feedback.
To build a berm that's four feet high with certain kind of plantings on top of there to make sure that the headlights aren't gonna...
Yeah. And obviously we can share that with the zoning board and then the neighbor may come back and say, we prefer a fence and would rather see a solid, a solid buffer than...
We've done this in other communities, so we build a mock-up that simulates the height of the berm. And you go out there at dusk and you just shine some headlights from a Jeep or a taller vehicle, um, and then they can see right then and there how it works.
Yeah.
The other... Should let the zoning board know if you're considering. Maybe get a copy of the, we can get a copy of the resolution for the, and the table resolution. Um... The others, the other side of this to consider, um, just from an overall planning aspect is that this is a strip of BNR properties. This is the second most eastern property in the rezoned BNR area that leads all the way back to McDonald's. In the other two areas that we recently reviewed for plans, there have been fences required, uh, black chain link fence behind, um, Ranjan Orthodontics and UG dental, because it's next to the school. There was no fence required to, uh, urgent care or eyesight, because it's adjacent to a town park. However, this being adjacent to a residential area, um, is there any thought or concern for perhaps requiring a fence, a six-foot fence, a visual barrier for privacy for those homeowners to be buffered from what could be a redeveloped business corridor eventually? Um, going down this road, we're, we're kind of starting the path only back down towards McDonald's by adding this rear access now as the rezoning calls for, as things are redeveloped, part of the requirement is that cross access. And typically it's gonna go through the rear of the property. Is this the opportunity to kind of look into the future about what we would require of other properties as they redevelop?
So...
I'm not a fan of fences.
Yeah, I'm not either, but, you know, I guess if, if people are able to go to the ZBA and voice their opinion and they would prefer to have, you know, a stockade fence or something that, you know, that would permanently limit that, and they would prefer that over landscaping, I mean, I'd rather see the landscaping myself.
But I think the fence in the situations that you described, Zach, was more for security to separate the school from the business.
That fence was, it was a black chain link fence, that was security.
For safety and security.
Correct.
This would be for buffering, so it's a different purpose.
Right, I tried, and I was trying to explain, you have a school, you have a park, and now we have, this is the first instance where we're looking at a residential area being that adjacent property, that adjacent use.
When you think about it, if that cross access, if everything goes through, we pay the service room behind all of those properties?
Or we just connect to the parking lots? Yeah.
You know, wouldn't it be nice if that, if we had a, a nice natural buffer all the way down to McDonald's instead of, instead of a whole bunch of different kinds of fences or...
And that's what you're looking at, yeah, and I think we're starting, this may be the, the trend is, is that area redeveloped, so...
Yeah.
We should plan it out well, so at least, you know, we transfer property to property, but, um, you know, if they come to the zoning board, you know, we can see what, what you...
What comes out of that.
Yeah, what, what they provide or what the neighbors are requesting or asking for and...
Maybe you could just let them know that we would kind of prefer the more natural, um...
We'll provide that stuff to the zoning board ahead of time.
We'll capture that in the table and resolution with, um, also a referral to the landscape consultant to try and, again, maybe have a, a standard here for the, the landscape buffer that could eventually continue.
Yeah.
Uh, whatever, other than that, ZBA...
I think everything else was answered, right, in your remarks?
I'd like to see some more detail on the rain gardens, they kind of just show a bubble area, they don't really show any plantings. Um, that's all they've shown, extended later to rain garden area, so just a little more planning detail and feedback on that. Um, and then light three, you know, ask the board about requiring a cross access easement off the end of their parking lot to the neighboring properties on either side.
Right.
So the board is supportive of that, so as we look at extending on...
I think we said last time that we would, that we would, uh...
We did bring that up.
We would require that, because we've already got a precedent for that and...
Just to look at the...
Urgent care in Tim Hortons and...
Yep, this is standard.
Yeah.
Why I'm...
Urgent care in Tim Hortons, uh, the...
Yep.
Any issue there?
I know there was some angst when that went in.
Yeah.
I can see that, it doesn't come to me, but I haven't heard issue or concern once that's gone in, that it's become a high volume, high speed.
Frankly, I used it tonight to shoot my coffee and...
I use it all the time.
Are you complaining about it?
You know, there was, there was some concern by the, by urgent care at the time, that it would be a high-speed access to there and causing major issues.
Yeah, nobody ever used it.
I haven't heard that.
At least not that I know.
Terry, you chairman?
I don't go there, I don't like it.
It's a tight...
It's in the slum, Terry doesn't go to my neighborhood.
Anything else the board is looking for on this, obviously referred to Bruce, and then obviously we can provide comments to the ZBA and then maybe wait to see what the ZBA outcome is.
Yep. Make the motion to table.
Thank you.
Canower.
Canower.
Canower, you beat ya.
Tiding's in Canower.
He's tired, he's had a long day. From the home stretch.
Been a long life.
Kind of the home stretch.
Aye.
Bastian?
Get, aye.
Burden?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Tiding?
Aye.
Kind of the home stretch.
Yeah, all right, public hearing?
Public hearing, I'm soon as I need things, so let's go through the public hearing, uh, for the Verizon cell tower, Shukrap Road. You guys like to kick it off, or would you like to see my notes first about what, maybe a tabling resolution for more information?
Well, there, there is a couple of things, you know, I, I felt that, um, looking for appropriate camouflage options, uh, should certainly be considered, whether or not that's ultimately something that we go for. I, I want to at least see the options that we have. Um, moving it to the east, when I saw the balloons, I mean, now, I will say, yeah, show, show my pictures, because the pictures of the applicants weren't the same viewpoints as, uh, the images that I took.
You had some more points as well to the north. There's, uh...
So one of the things that was, uh, you know, actually gratifying to me was that it's the low balloon, not the high balloon. That was something new that, uh, I didn't, I didn't know.
I think the first one that you had was probably the most clear, another good picture as well.
This is all from Webster, from the town board.
Yep, to really take a look at that second option that was suggested.
Yeah, I mean, you look at, okay, so that's looking west, so that in the foreground, that's the eastbound potential site.
Second location and potentially approximately a thousand feet.
That's in one of the driveways from the townhouses.
Uh, White Cliff Drive, I think I captioned it.
I think it was right here.
Yeah, right there, yep.
Okay.
And where was that balloon in reference to that?
Uh, right, uh...
On yourself.
Right here.
What if they moved that further to the south?
Well, that was what I was asking today.
Your variance.
You're talking here?
Well, I think it would be centered in the property.
It has to be centered, because their fall line is within two feet of each boundary.
They're asking for a variance already, so I think centering the...
So, okay, then it wasn't here, it was, it must have been here.
I was just thinking, if they can move it as close to the property line as possible, it would be a variance, because I think, um, Mrs. Ms. Richardson says...
Yes.
I don't think she would object further back and further to the south, because then, and if we could camouflage it, but I, I don't know the ZBA.
Right, she might not object, but what about, you know?
Right, Webster's getting crushed with this. You got all these people, and to me, it's, all right, minimize the impact to the most people. Whether they live in our town or not, I mean, they're still our neighbors.
Right, right.
Even if we want to beat them in all the sports and stuff and our schools, I mean...
Competition aside. It's all Webster's.
But they're all Webster's schools anyway, yeah.
You're not gonna hide the cell tower.
Correct.
You're not gonna make a sign.
Right.
A hundred and thirty-four feet, eight.
Hundred and thirty?
Yeah.
You know, I'd, I'd like to say that I think Ms. Richardson did a wonderful job of capturing a, a number of issues that quite frankly, I think the applicant has, has an obligation to investigate in earnest and come back to the board with. And whether, whether they think that the quote "camouflaging concepts" are more objectionable or not, um, I think we should be asking them for a half a dozen examples of successful camouflaging in communities that required it. I think that they should show us what the impact is of relocating it, I don't care if it's fifty feet, but what are the impacts? And if the impact is, like you say, that, um, it might somewhat lessen visual impact to her, but it might increase visual impact to others, well, that's at least a consideration for the board.
Relocation on the current property.
Yes, yes, because, you know, those were the two things that she asked for, but, um, you know, also, the applicant's...
Ben, go on, keep it on this, if you could, just finish what you were saying.
Yeah, so, you know, the applicant, uh, seemed to think that, uh, um, being real close to a cell tower was a, was a win-win for potential purchasers of existing property, she seemed to find evidence to the contrary. Um, I, I think we need to, to challenge that.
I think we should look at both those studies who commissioned them and, um, you know, what are the agendas of both parties that authored the studies? You know, I remember some guy saying, hey, you know, if you, uh, beat up numbers enough, they'll confess to anything. So...
And again, you know, at, at the end of this, um, we might draw the same conclusions that they, we would have otherwise, but I, but I think that...
No, I think we...
She brought some very interesting things to light that are very worthy of our consideration and the applicant's additional rigour to know.
Totally agree.
Yeah.
So, questions were, did they look at sixty-five B as a location? Do they look at twelve hundred as a location? Um, I mean, were those some of the, and was there no interest?
That's one exhibit G, that was referenced.
I was trying to find exhibit G.
Sixty-five B maybe a wetland.
They're not called exhibit fifteen.
What is it, Mark?
Sixty-five B maybe a wetland.
Can't they put on cartoons?
Yeah, that's, that's the one that's got all the problems, you look at that on the second half.
I think Villas of East Hampton, that whole area was wet in the back. It's my remembrance, but we can pull up the, the wetland map once we go through.
Okay, so let's say there was wetlands, can't they do the, uh...
Okay, so here they are.
Swap, where you mitigate, you take away wetland, you add somewhere else?
There's villains.
It's not impossible, but it's, obviously...
Obviously, we're telling them to go someplace else by doing that, and I don't know if that's...
Billisby's Hampton, he's got, where on Billisby's Hampton, I don't know where they... Can you turn on the wetland?
Yeah, I'll make it over there.
Thank you. Um, while Doug's scanning over, um, he brought up that they can supply the hundred and ten foot tower propagation map. Does the board want to see that? And we talked about the height, they said they did a propagation, we're showing what area was at a hundred and ten feet, is that even worth investigating?
Showing that situation?
You know, listen, none of us have the expertise to know whether or not a certain pole with a certain...
Yeah, I don't want to tell.
That's not for us to...
Something he said he can provide, isn't it, whether he wants that or not?
I don't really think that's one of our issues.
I don't, I got the feeling that they just brushed off the, um, the option of looking at maybe co-location and a smaller pole someplace else. They said, well, that's gonna cause interference problems. I didn't get the feeling that they actually looked at that very seriously.
We have to look through the documents to see what really, when they reference, they reference shoots several times.
Shoots.
I'd like to see it.
Webster town.
Right, I'd like to see it.
You know, maybe a co-location someplace else or a smaller tower someplace else. Um, they shut that down pretty quick, but I, I think I would like them to address that.
My understanding is that there are, there are cell providers who don't own any towers. They simply put repeaters and, and, um, sell equipment on towers owned and maintained by other people.
Yep.
And that Verizon, um, owns the towers wherever they possibly can, that's just a policy that they have. You know, I, I don't know if it's a business model or, you know, they've had difficulties with making improvements and, uh, but clearly they're a leader in, in coverage, so it's probably something that's important to them, but, um, you know, I mean, I, I think another good point that she made, um, is that, and I, and I think they brought it up in the previous, in their previous presentation to the board, um, this really has very little to do with making a phone call. It's these enormous volumes of data, photographs and drones and things that we send back and forth.
Number of users.
Networks.
Yeah, and, and hundreds of thousands of them at the same time going across these airways and...
Since capacity.
Yeah, um, so something that...
It's not gonna get less.
No, and it's, you know, I don't know that this is a, a life and fire safety issue as much as it is, it's the demand of consumers.
Society today.
As I stated, it's the network striving to sometimes be ahead of the curve, but also provide that service to its customers. Um, another tabling, another item, sorry, came up, generator duration.
They should, uh, know what that is and...
So generators have to run once a week for thirty minutes, and that's a national standard. So, and then they have to run once a year on full load, they have to be tested once a year for load. And every generator has a gauge on it that tells how many minutes it's run. So, um, you know, testing agencies and authorities in the jurisdiction can go up to the generator and read the counter on there and know exactly whether or not it has automatically turned on every week for fifty-two weeks and running for thirty minutes. The question that I have is whether or not it's even possible to get... The, the question that I have is whether or not it's even possible to get more than one generator to turn on at the same time. And while they, I can understand they don't want to be responsible for backup power if they end up selling or leasing space on their tower to another company, I, I think if this goes forward, we could absolutely mandate that they, they either don't allow competitors to share their tower in these space or they provide a generator large enough to accommodate, so there's only one generator.
Well, and that's, you, you run into dangerous ground with not allowing co-location because then you got, okay, the next guy goes on per property and builds another tower because we're not allowing co-location on the Verizon tower.
That's the director's permission for us to do that. And we tell people to co-locate.
Hey.
Alright, but either way, I, I think leaving just open that.
Provide one generator.
One generator.
Yeah, I agree.
Side or can you replace it?
That one generator wasn't that large, as I remember it was seven point five GW, it was a small generator.
Keep in mind you go with a larger generator, it's gonna create noise.
But I think the caveat isn't if they go with a one generator now, but if they co-locate, they have to swap it out and make a larger generator.
I thought they provided the specs on the generator, they were gonna use an instrument. You know, a hundred feet away, it was like four dollars.
How much they want to spend.
You can get all mufflers.
I think.
The generator, we put generators in the, in the basements of apartment buildings and we put mufflers on there so that you can't hear them through.
I think.
Exactly, I mean, they're not that loud.
I think one comparison though is the large generator that could potentially service three carriers versus three separate generators if they ran simultaneously.
There's not, there's not a big load, there's not a big electrical load.
They're probably similar to a lawnmower, I would imagine.
They're quieter than that.
Sure my generator.
They're quieter than that because we only, they only run at eighteen hundred RPM.
So, is it really a concern, the noise?
I guess we can go back to making sure we got the decibel levels and.
I, I think we do, I thought they.
I can ask.
I'm very positive that we got them.
Penfield place, we asked for additional probing to another level of. Probing for the sound.
Well, and, and that was another good point that she brought up, I mean, those, our providers don't, don't shield anything visually or
Would you like, would you like a more substantial buffer?
Absolutely.
I got a wall arborvitae in my yard that I planted twenty years ago, it does a great job.
Yeah.
I mean, nothing we plant's gonna cover the tower.
You got those high-end East Penfield arborvitae.
You can look at staggered, staggered pines, kind of on a zigzag pattern.
We can specify those.
A double-layered East Pen, East Penfield arborvitae.
I have been on the line, it's about just wide at the base and.
Trees rather than they just kind of show.
Overlaps and covers each other.
Yeah. At least that takes away the ground infrastructure and.
Yep. Um, okay. Gather studies, validate studies of research that were referenced. Generator duration details, um, landscaping, examples of successful camouflage, um.
And investigate an option to move it back slightly.
What's slightly, to the back of the tree line? Or two hundred? We suggested four hundred feet for the second alternative.
I'm just wondering if somebody can move back fifty feet or can we move it back?
Yeah, where, where's the least impacted all along?
I'll let them know.
Yeah. Like you pointed out, you've got a lot of people, you know, so Doug, you, you were telling me where, all those townhomes and condos are owned by.
Two, two, they're all rentals? No, um, there, there is a portion here on the east side that is owned by a gentleman in Webster. And there's a couple more throughout that are.
So there's a lot of family owned or?
But I, the majority I'd say is, is family owned, but there are a couple groupings of rentals.
But, okay.
Sure.
And that's.
I mean, just because they're around here, it means that, well, you're right, you're at the freaking cell tower.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I don't agree with that.
Zach, I assume that you will double check the provisions of our local ordinance that she was saying.
Several references, I was trying to read through them as she, uh, was referencing them for, in case I had to clarify anything, um, but we will.
And we have her.
I have documents that were submitted from Ms. Richardson that we can scan and provide to the board and the applicant. I don't have her, and we have the testimony on the video, so anyone is free to look at that, so if you haven't provided like her transcript of what she wrote, but all the materials she referenced, we have those.
Provide those to the board for, for the review.
Yep.
Right. Okay. Who's moving it?
I'll move it.
Second? Call second.
Getting greedy over here.
Send the letter.
Yeah.
Back to you.
Well, I tabled, send the table in later.
Yes, table resolution.
Hi.
Kenauer?
Hi.
Heidi?
Hi.
Okay, two missed lanes, we're gonna go through these.
Plank and Jackson.
Sure, it's the long after explaining.
Well, we gotta go through them.
I got one, three. Yep, well, we're, perfect, uh, but the first one. Thank you. Um, let's see, eleven, eleven thirty-eight Plank Road and thirteen fifty-seven Jackson Road. Currently, the property line exists as that dash line between the two, so, mm, there am I, I didn't really highlight it very well. Plank Road. Jackson Road property, no, I lied, that way. Jackson Road property, it's a little T. Current property line, they want to turn the property line ninety degrees and get it here, continuing to cross. And finish with two properties, so it's a two to two switch. Um.
They carved off a larger piece.
Carves off a larger piece as part of an older subdivision from the Birch Crest subdivision, um.
Bereznewitz, um, Birch, Birch Crescent.
Can you pull up the other plans though?
I would say it was like two thousand four, two thousand five-ish, there was a private drive that went back in with a couple of.
It's happening, I got you. See?
Six laps and, yeah, seven. Yeah, so I think they're.
All that, part of the subdivision, the requirement was just to put on the record that, uh, these parcels, some of these weren't included in the Penfield School District, they would be transferred over to the Webster School District and the proposed action to change the lot line, which is both properties and put them in the Webster School District. Currently, the Jackson Road one was in Penfield, it's an agreement that both, both school boards agreed to, this just finalizes that.
Okay, anybody have a problem with it? Alright, somebody move it.
Second.
Alright.
Burton and Bashan.
Burton Bashan.
Henske?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Kenauer?
Hi.
Hi.
Heidi?
See, all history channels, so it's gonna be that short. Still on Plank Road, eighteen ninety-five and eighteen sixty-three Plank Road, this is a very simple move. That line will move over, eighteen ninety-five becomes shorter, eighteen sixty-three gains that land. There's the map proposed, dashed line today, moving over to nine tomorrow.
Move it.
Motion.
Two to two, no new properties.
I'm sorry, who made this?
Uh, Kenauer and Bashan.
Bashan moved, Kenauer seconded.
Okay, Henske?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
You get to sign it.
Burton?
Hi.
Kenauer?
Hi.
Heidi?
Hi. Danny Chili's.
That's your November.
Nope, hi.
Riso.
Nope.
Oh.
Wrong.
Alright.
One too, that's a two.
That's pulled over to your November public view.
Nice, the present.
Okay. Any else, people? Thank you for your efforts, thank for being in there, we will adjourn.
Can somebody unplug me there?
I'm here next to you.